I was like, it's just the right brain, left brain. Yeah, literally Kylie taught Haley Harrow. And he couldn't. Interesting little fact. Okay, call the meeting to order and stand for the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance is to the county, of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which is us, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Thank you very much. Okay, good to see everyone. Hope everyone had a nice Thanksgiving weekend. And we're back for this special meeting to talk about facilities work. Couple housekeeping, I have some questions already, you'll see a packet that are put together for us to help with the exchange conversation that is out. We gather more information and communication across our community. So if we would all take time to share this with folks who may have not seen the email communication and then the other ways that this has been pushed out, we have those for each one of us to share, to help engage for more information, to continue to feed back to us. And thanks to those who talked to the various folks about what this program can offer. And appreciate your engagement with passing that information out and answering questions of what that exchange communication thought bubble of information is. Do you want to say anything to that?
Yeah, I can actually pull up a couple of things. So one of the key that I want to name what the thought exchange was, that emerged as an idea that came from, actually from the board's participation in the KSB convention. And I just wanted to provide for you quickly some early feedback for what has been kind of shared from there. So kind of unique little tool here, it gives you as a board. Let me talk to Vincent, we want to do it on purpose.
Oh, yes.
My bad.
Yes, yes, thank you. Right into your next slide. Appreciate that. We need a motion to approve the agenda. You press on, try.
Second.
Okay, all in papers, say yes?
Yes.
And that carries seven zero, thank you. Now we need to get to talking about, it's not really on the agenda, but I wonder. It's all related to facility and continued communication strategies that.
Yeah, so what it allows you to do then as a board and what's been able to do is it allows participants to log in and then there's a prompt related to what, you know, what should the primary focus or what's the top priority for you as the board continues their dialogue and has this continued discussion. And then you can have folks that can offer ratings then for each of those. And so this came from, this emerged from the board's participation in the KSB convention. Several members attended that and were able to see this put into action. And we were able to bring it here. So just in this, in this scenario, what you've been able to do or what you'd be able to see is, this is again kind of an initial look and it's still collecting feedback, is that your top five priorities that your community is telling you and then people are giving it various star ratings and that's causing it to move up out of the 245 thoughts, is that creating the best and highest educational experience for our students is what people are ranking as their highest takeaway. Safe and effective learning environments for students is their second. Third is top priority should be what is best for students. Fourth is, so these are unique individuals in our community. Most of these, this person says, I'm looking for longevity. How can we get our buildings in shape to provide an educational forward, safe, beautiful environment for the next 30 years? That then received multiple ratings and a high star rating. It causes it to kind of accumulate up and then provide you with some additional feedback. So that's open, as you can see, it's collecting feedback and it just becomes another tool to help inform you on how, you know, what is your community identifying, what's their feedback? And it's been a positive way to collect feedback. You see those priorities there, none of which necessarily surprise you. So as we transition in to tonight's meeting, I'd invite Mr. Cash up to the table. And McCann, do you have anything?
I don't have a question.
We really just wanted to pick up, in many ways where we left off at the previous area of dialogue. I would name for the board's sake a couple of things, which is that, you know, and I provided my reflection to you in an email earlier. The, what you have in front of you is a long range plan that we heard really positive feedback from those involved within it. That was a really good process to get community feedback. We've been able to get different versions and iterations of what the, what the plan should look like. You heard last week from Dr. Tomlinson from K-12 Excellence that there's certainly indication that you could be successful with a no mill increase. There's actually within that data also a reason to believe that we would be able to achieve a modest ask of something up to, including potentially as a second question, that the 27 million to address the middle school, beat or re-convert Eisenhower to a middle school and to, and to do all, I mean, the whole high school project, it'll really meet all of our district needs for right around $9.10 a month for the median homeowner. So I know when we left, there was a couple of things that Dwayne had. He wanted to make sure, some questions about roofing and some things like that. So we just want to try to help answer any questions that we have as you further your discussion around the potential of adopting a long range plan and then the other items that come along with.
Yeah, the only thing that I think that we had a little bit of a conversation about, you know, completeness of the plan and what can we get done with the $89.5 million? And I think I indicated at that time that I thought it was, it was a good plan, but at the same time, a little thin on some of the dollars we had allocated for deferred maintenance, roofs, HVAC equipment, some of those things. As we really tried to squeeze it down into a dollar amount that was palpable to the community. I think one thing that we really, through the survey, the phone survey, looking back at the past three bond issues, which was kind of telling to me, is option two had a ton of support, which is the, basically the bones of the long range plan that I put forward, had a lot of support until you added the dollars and you all saw that. And it was at 47%, strongly supported, support, yeah, in that way. So I went back and looked at the, we were $89 million, the last two bond issues that you presented to the community and, you know, what was the fail rate on those two? It was 47%. The big difference was they were all that $240 range per year impact. And as you look through the survey and you really ask it, what is it really telling us? What's the data that we're seeing here? Is that it is really tied to price sensitivity. The plan is, you know, the community is willing to support a plan. They're willing to support a plan that gets as much done as they can. It really is driven by price sensitivity. So that's what's really different about this plan is we're $89 million, but we're not at 240 something, we're at 109. And that is a huge difference, that's 50%. And every time in that survey, you drop the amount of the funds, you gained about eight to 12% of support. So I started to look at that and I was asking myself after some of those questions and some of the challenges we had to the data, was, is $109 the bottom threshold? Should we look at a little bit more to get more done on the deferred maintenance part? Or the option, other option is, do we start to look at the list of projects we have identified and start to scale those back as another option? One of the two, right? We ask for more money or we scale back more? But I just want to be clear that what I'm concerned about is, because I think right now, the plan we have and the data that we see is, this is a, you know, a plan that most likely the community is going to support. I feel pretty strongly about that. But at what price point, what, you know, how far can we push that dollar? There's a psychological piece of this equation too. Right now, we're at $9.10. That, you know, $9 a month, $109 a year feels more approachable to a lot of people. And once you get over that $10 mark, that starts to prick a little, you know, a little bit of a, something in their head, they go, that's a little bit more. So I don't know if it's really smart to, you know, ask for more, but at the same time, I do feel like we need to be really careful about what we're saying, we're going to be able to deliver and then really deliver. Does that make sense? So that was one of the conversations we had the last time. There was the conversation about the storm shelters. Is that something that we want to save almost $5 million by deferring that potentially? And that would make the plan feel much better to get more of the deferred maintenance done. If we kept that amount but cut that scope, because you're to Sherri's point, it wasn't something that community said, we got to have these. It was something that as architects, we felt was a good thing to do for parity, but we didn't see a ton of support for it or they're clamoring for it. So there's that and there's some other things that we could look at potentially to do. But I do feel like the plan that we have, especially if we ask it in two questions, sets us up for success in a, in a way. So I don't know if that answered any questions or if you have more questions after that. Ralph what?
Roofs.
Roofs. Yeah.
Sorry, Ralph. Sorry for changing someone else.
Roofs, I think would be around the range of three to five million dollars. Depends how we do it, what kind of membrane we use, what, complete tear off? Or just put a new membrane on top? We've got about 200,000 square foot of roofs that need attention. High school, it's about 200,000 square feet right now, but we're going to replace a big chunk of that in the new construction. That's right baked in the construction. So there's some, you know, about half of that roof needs to replace still. Eisenhower needs to be replaced and Washington needs to be replaced. Eisenhower, Lincoln and Roosevelt are in the B range. They could probably, need to be maintained a little bit and some, some dollars put to them, but I would not recommend this type of projects.
At what point will those other buildings need new roofs?
Well, I think that's where you bake it into that long range, you know, capital dollars. You start putting capital dollars away to plan for that. But I think it's a maintenance plan, you can maintenance those for a long time before they become critical. You know, what we've been doing a lot on these roofs is a coating. They put a protective coating on it, they want it for another 10 years, get you by it for a long time. But then it gives you a chance to save your dollars to plan for that complete. And you do one in five years, you do the next one in seven years or something like that. Yeah, but we'd work with a company to help us lay that plan out.
You, in the previous meeting, you have said that the community will pass a bond issue if they support the plan.
Yep.
And I'd say from the input that we're getting, we're not in agreement on what the plan is yet.
I would say we're 57% yes to this plan. As the scientific survey would say that they are in support of that.
Of 500 people that you surveyed, we're talking a community of 14,000 with an average of 4,000 to 5,000 voters. So I still feel like that number's relatively low.
I would add that, you know, Excellence K-12 has been doing this for a long time. When I looked at some things, this is also how they look at polling numbers for politics. And so 500 is a robust number for a community of 14,000 to get scientifically verified responses. So I feel good about that number of 500.
I was also concerned, there's 235 of the people that were polled in that that do not and have not had children in our district. That was also kind of just a statistic that I see in the kind of stood out to me. They are both.
But they are voters and they are taxpayers, right? And so they matter again.
Oh, absolutely.
I would imagine we have, I mean, what is our percentage of people that vote that don't have kids in the district?
That's a statistic. Although my kids are not currently in the district. But they've gone through the district, so.
So my question to you is, is the plan more important or a dollar ceiling?
I think it's both, to be honest with you. I think the plan is very important because I think also in the survey, you saw that they want to be listened to, they want to be heard, but they also want to be acknowledged. And this is the plan, that they're, most, most people are. There's a big contingent that would like to have a brand new high school. They will not support the dollar amount that comes in, that was clear. There's some that would be okay with the $50 million, you know, just do the bare minimum kind of a thing, but it was not strong. So I think there's a, there's a really strong feeling that that plan in that general form is a good plan. We've tweaked it since we had that survey, right? It's not the exact same we presented it with, but it's generally the same.
So your way around that is to put two issues on the same bond vote?
I, I would recommend to, and this is why. I think that it gives the opportunity, if the second one does not, if they do not support the second one, it gives you an idea of why and what the second plan might be to give you another opportunity. But it also gives you something to say, they will pass, I believe. They, with no tax increase, it was really strong numbers. So I believe that will pass and that will give the opportunity for me first in the show that you can deliver, continue your promises and deliver on promises and build that faith back and that trust back that we know that the survey also said that that was an issue for the community. But I think that with the right dollar amount, the whole thing would pass. I just don't want to, to somebody's point last time, this is the same amount that we just asked for twice and it fell by 47%. And that scares, concerns me, that that would be, if you put all your eggs in that one basket, you might get that same result again, just because of the historical nature of that.
I just want to interject real quick, as the superintendent, I think for me, what I see as being significantly better, and I give a lot of praise to this board and to the team at IDS, is for roughly the same amount though as those two previous, there's a significantly more affordable option that would go to our voters and there's a lot more getting done than the previous 88. And I think that that has come through the right kind of direction. This board has offered to the whole team, the work that you've done, Dwayne with your team, to be able to bring this forward. I just, to me, that's where I've seen a significant, because I've thought about this dollar amount difference too. And I think the big difference there is, when combined, you're getting all of your issues addressed. Elementarys get reconfigured like they needed, your middle school gets addressed and your high school gets addressed and that's not something that we could have said in the previous ones. Not saying, I just wanted to interject that from a dollar.
Couple of things is, so at the time we were surveying, you know, we had the same information from our committee, committee. But we have added some new variables. And these variables are starting to be understood. Redistricting, I don't think we should underestimate how emotional people are and attached to the buildings that they're accustomed to, whether that's any of the elementary sites. We do good things at all of those. Staff reductions to save money is going to be significant. So it seems like we've added into our conversation since the surveying, since your plan, some variables that I'm concerned, particularly on the second question, just those in itself, the uncertainty of that could, could make that fail. I think the, I feel pretty solid with the first question. I think that because these new variables are not disrupting that plan like they would the second plan. So I think we have a lot to answer, you know, within our community. We have some recommendations about which side or that. Those are going to be emotional for our families and for our, our community. Is that, I guess in your experience with this, you know, when we're talking about just construction and bond proposals, we've also added in some other huge elements here that make me very uncomfortable about that second question.
Yeah, I think that, I don't disagree at all. I think that that is a very emotional topic. But I don't think, from the online survey that I just got today, time and time to look at it, really dive, dive, dive into it, but the staff are worried, they're concerned. And I think that there's a lot of work there to be done to explain the plan and what is going to happen, how this affects them. Because they're worried about their building culture and they're worried about their job. They're worried about, you know, where will I be? Will I lose the person I really like working with? Well, there's a lot of unknowns there. So the sooner we can answer those questions in a definitive way, it will put a lot of that to ease. I think that that needs to be done pretty decisively and pretty clearly. I know it's a tough decision, I know it's really a hard decision and there's a lot of feelings about it in the community. But I think if you adopt a long range plan and you say, this is the plan that we've heard from the community that we want to go this direction and it makes the most sense long term for the person and we make this hard choice and take the emotion out of the bond, I think it will help sooner than later. But if it goes on, it will become a factor for sure. And there are going to be families that are going to not be happy about it. There are going to be staff that are not going to be happy about it, there just will be. But the community sees the benefits of going to three buildings, cost saving. So the community sees the logic of using it for Eisenhower's middle school long term. They see that and I think that's shown in the survey results.
What, well, what online survey did you get?
He's referring to the original or the online from Dr. Tomlinson.
Yes. I just got that email just before.
So you got that before we did, so we don't see those.
I have it in my inbox as well, I just haven't been able to bring it forth. Guys, it's, it's six o'clock and I was in, actually the meeting that I was in when I received it was talking to your elementary teachers. And I can tell you to echo something that Dr. or that Mr. Cash just shared is that, speaking with them today, there's a, there's an understanding, again, to that point that was made there is that not everybody loves the idea, nobody, nobody loves the idea of transitioning from four to three. There's starting to be better clarity and understanding. Talking to them about this being a transition plan or talking about the long range plan being Eisenhower be converted to the middle school so that resolves your middle school, there seems, seems to be clarity around that. The feedback that I heard directly from them to the point is, when asked, what would be the thing that could help you the most? And they said clarity sooner rather than later. Somebody explicitly said afterwards, if you want to help, if you wanted to help Eisenhower out today, this is a direct quote, we would ask that you take action tonight, just so that way we know. So I'm not encouraging the board necessarily to pursue it in that manner, but there is, this is not, this is not not being discussed. These clarity, this is, your team knows about this. And the more that we can give them clarity on a direction moving forward, the better off they're going to be and the more likely to that point we'll be able to start addressing a continued concern, where am I going to be, what am I going to be doing? Who's going to be my principal? Who's my class, who's my teammates going to be? All of those things will start to be able to provide that clarity.
So with that, you make a decision, you just decide that we're going to move forward with Eisenhower becoming a middle school. We offer that as question two and it fails. What do we do next fall? You know, operationally, if we can move forward if question one passed, we would start, I'm assuming everything related to construction at the high school. But how do we operate? We need, we need some of that money to transition these facilities. So what would that, I don't want to be a naysayer, but I want to be realistic. If momentum were to move with that negativity because of redistricting, I'm going to have to send my kids somewhere else, I don't like this, I don't want a middle school at that location, when some of that reality starts to flow and we can't do it, what do we do? What is our plan there? That makes me anxious. I hate to see Eisenhower vacated and just sitting with no use for a while. But can we operate in the other three elementaries without some money to make them safe and secure and some of the things that we need to do there? As far as the cycle, I mean, the long range plan looks good, I commend that far. We know we need to do this, but if we fail, what's the soonest we could come back around and ask again? And what is, what is that timeframe? What is our statutory rules, what are the requirements? Do we have to wait a year? What is, what is that?
So if you, if you don't mind, I'd like to try to answer that at least on our perspective. So if you can imagine that you took, so if you, if you were to approve the long range plan, which shows Eisenhower being converted to a middle school, you were to make a determination that there was a bond election for the second ballot and it was successful, we, we will start January, well, by the, I mean, sooner than January, we'll already start transitioning our plans to start making the transition so that we can start notifying, number one, we'd engage, we'd bring back a recommendation to engage with RSP to start a boundary study. We would start working on our, on our district level leadership team to start looking at how we would staff those locations. We would look at what classroom locations would look like across those other three buildings. That's going to start as soon as you take action in December. If it was unsuccessful in March, then the board would have, if it was unsuccessful in March, you, we would already be planning on, in that scenario of Eisenhower not being, not being used. And probably the first thing I would think is, we know we've had a property here that we've talked about for a long time that would need, that needs to be, we could live short term. We could transition our resources over there. We would continue to utilize Eisenhower in some manner. But my encouragement for the board is, whatever the decision is, once you do that, we're going to start executing that irregardless of the bond. And I think that, that also sends a message, if we're committed to the long range plan, we're also committed to then bring that being utilized in this scenario as a middle school move forward. Does that make sense?
I appreciate what you're saying, but I also appreciate what Jeff is saying.
I'll be clear, I appreciate what else being asked.
The elementary schools and it's not in there.
Do what?
The, the other elementaries, it's only in the middle school option. We don't have it in the first option. And if, God forbid, you don't pass a first bond issue, much less a second, what work still needs done and how are we going to cover that?
So good question, my previous could. So good question, my previous could, does the board want to consider what question one really is? And do you want to include some advancements now you're not mill rate neutral, but that's a different discussion.
Well, but we could, because you could be, you could pull things out of the first question. Do you have the ability to pull that back up from last time? I'm trying to remember what was all on there, but so we've got $4 million. These are rough figures. We've got $4 million that we're going to pay off rents and leases. We've got 1.5 or 1.7 million we are going to use for athletics. Do we take those options and push them into option two or question two? And we pull the elementary, the 5 million that we needed to do the elementaries up into question one. So now we've got the high school, the elementaries into it. We're still staying within the 62.5 million. So we're still staying mill rate neutral. But the other stuff, which I'm going to say optional at this point, would move into question two. That way, if it doesn't pass, we know it's still something we need or more that we want, not necessarily a need at that point. But we're addressing the elementaries, we're addressing the high school.
If you combine the, if you combine the renovate, renew their current high school and the elementary schools, that is 69, 970 million.
Will you pull?
But that's before you make any cuts.
Right, right. As I was saying, you cut out what we don't need. So the storm shelters can go. Obviously you need to look at the secure entrances. I mean, Lincoln's got one that's makeshift Roosevelt does need one. But you could start moving things and playing with the numbers to get you back to that mill rate neutral. But I, I agree, I don't think putting the elementary in with the middle schools is a smart choice.
And I also feel strongly that having an option one that addresses one building and putting every other building contingent on option two doesn't really serve the majority of the students in the community.
And I, on that note, I also struggle with closing Eisenhower because we're contingent on using the middle school and moving that to Eisenhower. Well, if the community votes number two down and says no, that clearly states they don't want the middle school at Eisenhower. And now we've just closed a completely good building. I struggle with, with closing Eisenhower.
You have to close a completely good building regardless.
I still am siding with you. We only have 16 classrooms at Eisenhower.
The thing that I would remind you is this is, and this has been caught somehow, this often gets misinterpreted along the way. This long-range plan is what our community, we invited hundreds of people, they showed up, they represent others. They provided feedback on what they wanted. Isn't that a true statement?
I think so.
And so partially, I just, for me, the long-range plan is reflective of what those in our community said was how to best solve this, this issue. I'm not saying that as both, as those who have to make decisions at the table, you'll obviously have a multitude of things to do, but to consider. But I do think it's worth reminding ourselves that we followed a really good process, that we had a lot of really good feedback on. Through that process that we were told Eisenhower should become the future middle school. We didn't just come up with that. That was community's idea.
It was community's idea.
To me, the key is long range.
Long range.
I think we need to figure out what we can get done right now. Plan, know in the future that we'll have to do some more.
We'll have to do some more.
I'm concerned we got to get this next bond issue passed. Means less money, we work with that. Because if this, this one doesn't go, I don't know what that says. We've already got a lot of staff and parents upset about what we're talking about now. But if we can't get a bond issue passed to start the process, we won't have any trust.
What other community or school programs do we have now that are in different places? Such as Strive, such as Make Kids.
Strive, Make Kids, T3.
Early Childhood.
Early Childhood, they'll be vacated.
They have to move.
Central Office, Special Education Cooperative.
Alternative School.
So in my mind, why would we, if let's just say option two doesn't pass, why would we think that Eisenhower is going to sit empty?
That's, I think, my point is there's no way that such a key asset wouldn't go. And like, we have to be cognizant of the fact that we won't not use that facility.
We won't not use that facility. And so, yeah, I want to be really careful that we're not saying language that a building is just going to sit because a decision isn't made on a bond. We have plenty of need for multiple things all at the same time.
And you'd have an opportunity to vacate, for example, this building, which was a part of the discussion and has continued to be, and then could be marketed and sold. And that revenue could help support other updates and things as well.
I have a, I have a question with all of that. Very concerning question, I think for me, hearing this, which is great brainstorming and problem solving. But I'm not quite a fan without seeing something more descriptive of a short-term plan inside the long-term plan of what I just heard, like all of these, the kids strive, you know, T3 moving to Eisenhower and then we have to move them again. I'm thinking about the impact that has on staff, students, whatever other pieces we haven't talked about yet. So if that is a direction that we're going, I'd like to see more development and understanding of that reality because that's a two-tiered or a three-tiered depending on what iteration I'm hearing. So maybe that's a knee-jerk reaction to what I was hearing and it's just a thought process.
Laura, I think the, the thing that also taken consideration in that vein is that if, if you choose not to name Eisenhower, let's say, and we say that, that we're going to not close that one, we're going to close something else. And then you redistrict the community and then it passes, now you're redistricting twice. I think that is way more disruptive and more displacement. Using Eisenhower short-term for those programs, because we're talking two years before the construction is done, right? So we have more opportunity to, if it, number two does not pass, they don't support it, we'll understand why. What were they against? And be able to go back in that timeframe to, I think, to Jeff's question. You can go back in August or November of that year, but you can't do both. You can do one or the other. You got to, I think it's six, 90 days or something between both or something like that, six months maybe. Yeah, so you could, but I think that's why it's another reason to break it out into two questions, to find out really where the community stands on it. Do they really support this as much as we think they do? Because that will tell us one way or another. And that gives us an opportunity to go back to them and say, what is it about it you did not like? And they might say, I think you went too short. Then it should be the five, six, seven, eight plan, you know, that you went too small. And they could say, we just don't like this idea at all. We don't know, because they haven't been presented with that data completely. But if, if to Chelsea, to your point or to anybody else's, I think there is opportunity to, to squeeze some things at the high school to give some other things at the other buildings, not at least the secure entrances and some of those building updates at the elementary schools would be, you know, something that would be, but that means you have to cut something, right?
I don't see how we can't get 3 million from the remodel secure entrances and elementary building updates. Put the rest of the lease purchase payoffs on question two. Or part of the athletics. Am I understanding exactly what impact it is?
I'm not okay with lease purchases. We have had a history of not having the ability to follow a maintenance plan. If we do not get that lease purchase off of there, we are right here. We are trying to do a little bit here and a little bit there. We're not doing anything well. I'm not okay with that. I'm okay with the safe and secure entrances and taking off the sports.
I'm not saying take it off permanently. I'm saying put it on option two. It's still on a bond issue. It's just on the second portion.
I don't think it's, it's an option for me as a board member. We need maintenance long-term and we need to be able to take care of whatever we do well. That's a commitment that I think that, I mean, I know I want to say that I worked hard to do with this community.
So what are you going to do? You've got a community out there that says no, they don't want to do that. And that's the one thing that prevents them from voting yes on fixing the high school and the elementary schools is because they refuse to pay off the athletic field.
Then they're saying no to long-term maintenance.
No, well, they're saying no to, I don't want to pay for the field. But I want to support the high school. I want to support that.
I would love for us to try and fundraise some more to get that done so that we can have restrooms out there for our people while memories are made in a second type of classroom with our kids. Because that field, a lot of good things are happening there. A lot of community members are very pleased with that. We need bathrooms, you know, concession stand, I don't know. Like, I mean, it sounds like we need that, but I know we need bathrooms. Maybe we can fundraise for that.
I will on that capital committee to spend, raise the million dollars plus to do the things we did. They're not interested in doing anymore.
I understand that.
That's a responsibility of the district.
I hear you, Perry.
And that is a responsibility.
It might not be that group, you know, who knows what the possibilities are. But I'm with you. But I'm not, as a board member, I am not interested in not paying off our lease purchases.
Well, I agree.
We cannot get a long-term maintenance plan to care for the new things and the things we currently have. Well.
And the thing we talked about also in continuing with the lease purchases, that's taking money away from capital outlay.
Right.
Every year.
Every year. I'm not, I'm not interested in not doing the roofs. Like, we need to start carrying.
That's your plan.
That's the top of everything up here. Everything's under that. And so, you know, I personally, I like what we have here. I know the whole community doesn't. I know that there's, we're not going to make everybody happy. I understand what you're saying, Jeff. I love what you said, Lara, that, you know, what would be helpful is if we had option B. If it doesn't pass, this is our in-between, the long range. But the long range is we know we need a new high school and a new middle school. Those problems are not going away and we need to do it well. And we need to take care of the ones that we invest in.
Well, as long as you're talking money, nobody's talking very much about one and a half million dollars we're going to save by upending the current middle school. Option two doesn't get approved, will be saddled with the middle school another couple of years?
Yes.
I can't lose that. We got to close that now. That million and a half a year is huge. That goes on forever.
I want to hold that number back up. I, I want to be careful. I, the numbers I showed also reflect salaries, so whatever expense.
That just moves.
It's just that some of that amount will move. But in terms of one of your most critical sites, there's significant savings in property insurance. There's significant savings in ongoing maintenance. There's significant savings in the future where you're no longer using that, that site. So I'll have to look back at those numbers. I just, but I, to the point, my point I'm trying to make is I don't know that I would, I don't want to go be on record saying it's a million and a half just by moving right from that building, but it is substantial.
Well, we have a good chance of probably selling that property.
And the property in its own right isn't, basically an entire city block. It would be prime real estate.
It's lots long and one block wide.
So if we come back and let's say option, number two doesn't, I keep saying option two. I need to get away from that. Question two doesn't pass and people are, no, they clearly don't want it. We ask, what is a contingency plan for going with the middle school? Are we going to look at options of putting the middle school somewhere else? Or are we going to bring it back to the community and hope that they change their minds? We haven't even explored different options of what a middle school somewhere else on the side of the high school. We redo the high school, we're going to have ample space at the high school site where we could potentially put the middle school. Why could we not build it? Have them come in through North High Drive, have the high school come in?
Two reasons. One, the community had strong opposition to that a few years ago. Strong opposition. People did not want middle school kids on the same campus with high school kids. I thought it was a brilliant idea. I thought we can consolidate a lot. People were not emotionally comfortable with that. There was a lot about traffic and congestion. And the other thing is, is you're talking building a brand-new middle school, which will be a tax increase of around $300 to $400 a year.
But do we, do you know what that's going to be? I asked.
It'd be $45 million minimum.
Is that including the stadium and all of that or just a building?
Just the building and parking and infrastructure for a new middle school. For a new middle school. And right now we're getting a new middle school for 20. And we did ask the question. And one of our options, early options was that exact option. We asked the committee, do you support? And there was no support for that. Because originally it was my original idea.
I don't believe that Eisenhower is the best option and the best place to go.
Do you believe that the community didn't support the middle school and the high school being on the same site this round?
I don't think it was talked about enough or presented enough to even discuss it, in my opinion. I don't recall that even being, and I was at one of the meetings. I wasn't able to go to all two or all three of them.
Was it there, was it discussed, Lara?
Absolutely, it was discussed when I was at each meeting. It was discussed. Pretty good length of the initial response in my recollection, I'd have to go back to my notes because I took lots of notes. But that initial was like, oh, that would be. But then when you got into hearing and seeing what that felt like to folks that were there, that was too much to put a seventh grader in that same space was, I don't know, what, basically what I was hearing.
Yeah, we asked the poll question and we asked them, you know, multiple options. And that was one of the ones that got no traction.
And it was 120 people out of 14,000. Again, I'm saying that the relative numbers that were, were saying the people that we polled.
Then why did we poll anyone?
Very small pools.
Represent the example. And it was scientifically reliable.
I don't think the community ones were.
I feel like the plan that we're looking at most closely resembles option three. However, it does not include safety and security at the elementary schools. So what we have the most support for and the reason why we're targeting mill levy neutral is because of the resounding support that goes all the way to option three. But option three, as presented, included portions of the HECs and safety and security of all elementary schools. That's what we had support of. And so I think we are making a mistake to look at a separation. I understand you're talking about people's tolerance for what they can afford and what they're comfortable affording. But that's also, what are they getting for that? And so we presented, hey, we'll fix the high school, we'll do safety and security, mill levy neutral. Cool, do that. Option two, less support, but we said we would be doing a whole lot more than what we're discussing right now.
So Sheri, you're saying that if we did secure entrances at Roosevelt and Lincoln, move those down to the high school to option three, mill levy neutral and move something out of there. Do you think that would closely resemble what we presented to our community?
That's, that's what I'm after. I'm concerned about moving the elementary schools to an option two when our mill levy neutral included safety and security. And safety and security was very high in, in the topic of conversation for what our community is asking of us. And to put that in option two and then say, well, we know why it didn't pass or anything else, it feels like we're.
Move athletics to middle school to answer to our second question and move safety and security down.
I mean, that's what we asked, that's what we offered and we aren't honoring that with this plan.
I don't like it, but I can support it.
I understand what you're saying, but.
But that's all you're doing at the elementaries is just the safe and secure entrances? You're not doing anything to accommodate for the extra kids that are coming in?
We have, what do we mean? We have buildings that are underutilized.
Well, I don't know, we've got $4 million up there that says we need it, plus another 1.6 million that needs to go into the elementary. So how can we move those kids?
For furniture, for carpet, for wall updates, because the sound, it just, it's just not conducive. Those things are the things that kids are learning in right now. We know we want them done, but they're not high on the priority list. We think about what has to be done. I am comfortable with having those on option, on our ballot question two and putting that in a long-range plan. We know they have to be done. They don't have to necessarily be done right now for us to function well.
What I'm hearing right now is there's nothing to pass, even this board, nothing. We might as well not even take a vote. If we can't have, you know, everybody supporting the decision that's made or to a seven, zero consent, then what are we wasting our time for? I think we have to come to some consensus. We all have our prejudices, our biases. Can we set any of those aside and go with something else? You know, can we go around the table and say, okay, what, what's your plan? What would you like? Let's see, Chelsea, yours, Sheri, yours, Bill, yours, Rebecca, Jeff, me. What, you know, what would we hear?
Perry, I don't, I don't, I mean, I appreciate that because you're wide. Perry, I don't, I don't, I mean, I appreciate that because you're wise and I valued that in you. But I think we're trying to figure it out here. I don't think that we're not in unity. I think that this is where iron sharpens iron. And so we're trying to figure out what is best, not who's right, I would hope. Right?
Yes.
And so, and I think, I would hope, and I can tell you as a board member, whatever the plan is, whatever the vote is, whether I thought it was the exact thing that we should be doing, I will commit and champion it out in our community because I believe in this board and I believe we're doing the right work.
And you've got to remember, this is really the first time we've had a discussion like this as a board. We spent six months gathering information. All the balls in our court. We've got to make sense of that information, come with a united proposal.
And that's what I've told the community too, through emails. You know, communities think that we probably have a lot of meetings on the side. We do not. We come here and do this. And this is important. And so, yes, we're passionate about it and we have some things that we're really afraid to move on. But I think this is valuable discussion.
I wonder if it would be beneficial to take a moment to reset and each of us just write down non-negotiables and items that are, that are musts at this point, based in our conversation. Maybe it's not time for that, but it might be really beneficial to individually write down some of these musts, get clarification, Mr. Cash is right here, you know, if there's things. And then we regather while we're here and say, okay, this is my list without, well, Chelsea, what do you think? You know, not that we can't then come back and talk about why are these my rankings of what we're hearing and what we've been presented and what we're hearing. We all have different, and some of the same, but different people that are reaching out to us also that are informing the conversation. I think we have a responsibility to our district and our community to make some decisions, whatever way that's going to be, sooner than later also.
We've also paid a lot of dollars, a lot of studies.
A lot of studies.
And ideas and plans. Now that there's something up there that is coming as a recommendation, we're starting to pick it apart.
I can tell you that I can vote for this as it is with two, two, I mean, I can tell you that right now. And so that's where I'm at. And I don't like moving things around because there's wins and losses to all of that. I do love what you said, Lara. I would believe next times our work session would be, if the bond doesn't pass for option two this time, here's how that will look in the next two to three years, so that our community has clarity and that we're utilizing our resources well. And that's a great insight, and I think that's what you were saying, Jeff. I'm not sure that's Duane's job to answer for us.
I would like to ask one other question. When we first started this, I remember you had 42 million for fixing up the high school. Why did it balloon so much?
I think that was construction. We're at 45 now, so I think we're still pretty much in line. We got a little bit bigger too.
So it's actually, where's it under 20, how do you even go on now?
Well, as you can see, it's, there's, well.
You can't click.
So three and a half million dollars for the building updates inside the building. Another million dollar, I just moved that. So I had 1.7 million dollars for athletics. The demo at HECs gone 750,000, lease purchase was a big one, 4.6. That was a big one that we did not have planned for before. And then we've got to make sure we have the soft costs to cover fixtures, furniture and equipment. They're going to need stuff to operate the building. So I think that's.
What about the safe rooms for the elementary? Is that included in that?
Not in that number, no. That's in the elementary school number above.
Bill, nobody asked for those. I mean, we haven't heard anybody in the community say they wanted those. And so, and I love that, that is, you know, architecturally, this is, you know, the way of the future and what we should be thinking about. If we were building a brand-new building, we would be. But to me, that's just not, and I've never heard anybody through our board discussions, you know, reach out and email and say, hey, you know, it is important to us that you keep that conversation on the table. Heaven forbid, we don't ever, you know, have an event where we look back and, but we've gone a lot of years, so.
Is there anything we can do on the soft cuts, soft costs? I mean, that's 11 million right there.
But you used every bit of it.
We don't know. So what's this going to be used for? That's the other question that they're going to ask.
It's fees, permits, testing, consultants, other consultants, the specialist consultants, and then fixtures, furniture and equipment.
To do it right and well.
Fifteen percent is the industry standard and a lot of people say 20. Fifteen's on it. Like I said, this is skinny. It's skinny everywhere. And like, going back to your point, the storm shelters support 22 million dollars. I would love to sink that 4.2 million dollars in preferred maintenance and remodels.
And roofs.
Yep, 100%. I would feel much more comfortable about this plan if that was the case. Somewhere, at least five, I would love that 10. I think 10 would be great, but again, I think we need to get something that people will pass and support.
And do as much as we can.
I think the numbers we're at right now, that will happen.
And I know, I mean.
If you move athletics out, I don't see any problem with that at all. I think that gives a section of the community who would support option two or question two, you know, because that's where they get their athletics. It's a reason for them to say yes now. I think there's some, there's some good advantages to that. There's advantages to a lot of these things, if you move things around or whatever. But the, I think the core plan is still what the community told us that they want.
Question on that 7,000 for the rental or the concession, was that an annual price? So in terms of our overall, that's very small to maintain that if that's the wish of the board to remove that at this point. And, and plan in the long, you know, as the stair stepping.
I wondered if we couldn't fundraise with some of our, our corporations, our industry over, over some of that. Like, that's what my mind went. I get it that our, that committee did well and they worked hard and they accomplished much. And I understand that they're like, we're good now.
And I don't like operating with a half-big facility out there.
I hear you.
Ask Shane Markus how he likes it.
I hear you.
Ask the high school how they like it.
I hear you.
Our community certainly wants safe and secure entrances.
It's not ideal, but in prioritizing the, the musts of our educational facilities, I, I do just offer that as a point of conversation.
And listening to the community on the top floor that Dr. Vincent showed, not a single one said anything about sports or athletics. It was all safety and security of our children.
Why did we build that facility in the first place? Or were we going to play if we didn't? We were leaving the college.
There's, there's no criticism occurring over the hard work that was placed into what we have.
I understand that.
But prioritizing and having to make some priorities is kind of where we're at.
And where are we placing our?
Yeah.
But being fiscally responsible to the community and putting the money where the community is telling us to put the money is different than what we need to.
Where are they telling us to put the money?
Into safe and security for our children.
A new high school and a middle school.
And they do say high school and they do say middle school.
They say high school, they say middle school, they say safety.
Do we need storm shelter?
No, I think so, but we need two entrances at our, at our elementaries, right? Because Washington's, okay. So if you took out the concession stand.
So I want to clarify that because I think that was asked last time. The $7,000 is for a concession stand, not toilets. The restrooms is the need at the high school, not concession stand necessarily. And restrooms are, I think, a safety and security issue personally. You know, if you've ever been at a place and you don't have a restroom, you've got to go there and you can't. That's a pretty big deal to me.
So clarify that.
About a million dollars, what it takes to build a proper building you can maintain and have for a long time. It's session stand, toilet building, restroom building with electrical service.
Combining the two.
It's basically one building. Yeah. If you're going to build it, you might as well put the concession stand. It's the cheapest part, right?
So what's the other 500,000?
More seats. There needs to be more seats at the building at high school, okay, at the full stadium.
More bleachers.
More bleachers, yeah.
Still, play varsity there.
I love, I, I love it. I mean, I think we need that stuff and I think it's important. So hear me, Perry. And I'm not a sports person. Like, I think we need bathrooms. A concession stand is a good idea if we can put them together and we obviously need more seating. Not against that. I think there's many in the community who agree with that. They spend a lot of time out there with their families. Could we, would you be open to moving that to the second option on the ballot and moving the safe, secure entrances for Lincoln and Roosevelt to the?
Doesn't matter particularly to me other than the fact that, you know, people I've heard were extremely grateful that the money was raised and we could put in bleachers, press blocks and all of that. Now, when are we going to finish it?
When are we going to finish it?
That's the next question.
Yeah.
When are we going to finish it?
Yeah.
So.
And, and it's in our long-range plan. Like, I don't think we're walking away from that.
Well, it's get deferred. Well, I'd like to suggest we follow up with Lauren's recommendation. We'd sit down, two or three things we feel that the bond has to include. Go around the table and share that, see where we are.
What does that mean? I, I don't, this is what we've come to. So I guess I'm, I'm lost. Like, what am I not willing to, what are you asking?
I was just trying to read all of what I was hearing and it sounded like we were in different configurations of what we have presented up there and what the community, a, a portion of our community has told us. Because we haven't heard from everyone and we will never hear from everyone, like, on this. So I just wondered if it would help to write them down and say, these are my non-negotiables.
Just want the plan to reflect what we told the community the plan was for middle levy neutral.
And that's your bottom line. It may not be everybody's. That's what I think Lauren's trying to get at. Right? An hour to say to bond, we've got to close that middle school. We've got to have that savings. A year from now, the Kansas legislature is going to have a new school funding run. We have no idea what that's going to mean for us if we don't have our own house in order fiscally.
Bill, I hear you and I think this plan addresses closing that middle school.
When?
Only if it passes. If question two doesn't pass, then we're back to the bottom line.
This is what's making me crazy. This plan addresses closing the middle school if it passes. So if you're like, if it passes, so if, if, if we're going to take that off the table because it might not pass, what's the next option?
That's what we, that's what I want to know. What is a contingency plan? If option number two does not pass, what is that option?
When you say we have to close the middle school, that's your non-negotiable. What does that look like at the ballot in March?
If you're going with 65 million, the one that's revenue neutral, right?
Yeah.
You've got to have enough money to fix up the high school, plus add whatever you're going to do at Eisenhower, so that the middle school can move up there.
Cannot do that.
You cannot.
Cannot afford it within any of those options.
Took 20 million out of the high school is good.
But then we're doing things.
I think you're overbuilding the high school. See, there's where we are. That's why I think your suggestion would be a good one. What other issues are out there that some of us haven't shared?
And honest thoughts on buildings. Nobody's really talked about their honest thoughts on keeping or not keeping buildings.
It does feel like we should be having that conversation first and voting.
Because we've got this whole list of pros and cons, we haven't even looked.
There's pros and cons to all four of your elementaries. If you were making decisions in a vacuum, one of them would be the one that you'd close. If you're making it with a thoughtful, long-term approach, the one that you would take action on would be Eisenhower. That's the reality that's in front of this group. I don't like any of the realities that we're facing, but I shared that this, this afternoon with our team, with our elementary team. The thoughtful, long-range approach to ensuring, to Bill's point, that you've got a, a middle school solution for almost pennies on the dollar. You, you, I'm going to say it this way and Duane, you tell me if you agree. You will not be able to go out and find a middle school that you can build in for 19 million.
No way.
But this community has an option to do that for 19 million. That's awesome. That's amazing. That's, that's a part of the long-term approach. And it can't happen without Eisenhower being the one. So if you were making it in isolation, it'd probably be, again, if it was in a vacuum.
It wouldn't be Eisenhower.
Some would, it wouldn't be Eisenhower.
Right.
But it's not in a vacuum. It's in the long-term approach. That's what you, that is what we've been tasked with. And so the challenge then becomes is, one of the things that I actually think is an important thing to note and draw out of this discussion that is a positive. It seems clear that, to me, based on the conversation, that a two-question ballot is something that this whole board is considering and that's a positive thing. The other thing I'd like to point out is, Arc City just passed a two-question ballot. So we keep talking about it as though, well, we want to front-load one with this, you know, question one and then, well, what happens if it doesn't? There's been communities that have passed, Robert Washburn has just finished up a significant amount of their work. Guess what they did? They got it done on a two-bond question. So there's, there are a lot of ways to be successful, and I think it's a positive in this discussion that the two questions is how it's being resolved. I think for me, as I just kind of reiterate where we're at, is there's really no more economic way to right-size. We know that we need to transition from four elementaries to three. This left, this plan that's in front of us leverages the, the fourth one as the key asset. And that's why Eisenhower becomes the one that makes the most sense. And while, and I want to be clear, I've got four children at Eisenhower. I understand the emotions of it. I understand the emotions of it on all angles. It's, but again, there's pros and cons here, just for your knowledge. I've placed those there. We pulled those together as we had our discussion. I wanted you to be able to see those same ones.
What was the renovation cost of the middle school?
To renovate it?
I'm just curious.
It's like 25 million, maybe, something like that. I can't remember what we came up with to kind of get it back to a kind of just baseline. No major improvements. About like that's what it was, something like that.
There's a contingency plan. Could potentially be a contingency plan if that, they don't vote it. I mean, you don't.
Put more on it.
Five more million into renovating it. Where do we cut that out to get it back down to 19 million? I'm just, these are contingencies.
Doesn't matter. So what do you, so we take it to, so it doesn't pass off ballot question two. So next time we go out to the community and say, do you want to build at Eisenhower or do you want us to reinvest in the middle school? And then give them two ballot options there?
I still don't like the idea of closing Eisenhower. I still think it's one of our best schools, productivity and building-wise.
I hear you, Chelsea.
So I just can't close it based on a long-range plan that I can't guarantee is going to be the actual plan. Because we might have to go some other direction.
In our long-range plan, doesn't it say we want to eventually get to a five-eight minute site up there? That's in our plan, isn't it? That's what you initially started out with and then we got the pushback and said, well, let's make it six-eight. With the idea that 10, 20 years from now, you could have the fifth grade up there. And by that time, our enrollment is down, you'd get by with two long entries. The long range.
The enrollment's back up and we need to put our fifth graders up there. Yeah.
That's perfect. You're dreaming there, Dave.
We're allowed to dream.
Well, we have two things we're doing. We're, we're looking at the very immediate short term and this 10-year, you know, what, what's it look so that we set up for, for success long-term? Like, we have both, and maybe that's where the tension is, is we don't have that crystal ball to be able to facilitate what's that 10-year from today look like for some of us in, in this and how the community will handle it.
I guess I would come back to what I started with, what I was saying. If I, this plan, there may be parts of it, like, I'm not particularly fond of a Eisenhower becoming a middle school. But if that's community direction, I can understand that if we have assurance of support. We, we started this whole process with, we really need to, to pass a successful bond. And at one point, it was even if it was something small to get this passed. So I think your two-question approach would pass a smaller part of it. That would be successful. And with some tweaking, I think that first question would pass. My question is, we need to do the second part of this, that getting us up to 89 million. But with the variables that we just recently threw on our community, that this is, I'm not questioning so much the, the plan as I am. Are we, are we? not questioning so much the plan as I am, are we, are we, do we need to reconsider how our community reacts to this? When the reality of redistricting, when reality of closure, when reality of budget cutting and staff reduction starts to become apparent, is that going to have a negative effect on both questions? And so that's the part that I'm personally wrestling with. I'm not fighting so much against this. I don't have a non-negotiable on this. It's, I, just to bring this to all of you, is even in spite of all that we're going through, do you think by tweaking this some, that the community would support both questions?
That's a question to me. I think the survey results, the scientific survey results says it does. It will, it will. The thing that is interesting to me is that we're forty-seven percent positive on question two at two-hundred-and-forty-two million, two-hundred-and-forty-two dollars a year. We're the same basic plan at a hundred-and-ninety dollars a year. That, I think, is, and the survey really shows that they're price-conscious. It's very much a price issue for them. And that is the why you narrowly passed, or narrowly missed the last two, because two-forty-two or two-forty-five, or whatever those numbers were, were just too much dollars. The plan, I think, was something that they could get behind. It just was the dollar amount.
I don't even.
And this one at a hundred-and-nine, I think is way better of a, you know, option.
I don't think that's a fair statement to say that it was just the dollar amount that shot down the last.
It wasn't. I'm not saying just, I'm not saying just, but it was a big driver, I think, that in it, from what the survey results we got from the phone poll. Because you can see that as the price goes down per option, the support goes way up. But every time you drop fifty percent, I wish we did a fourth question in there. We didn't. But I think if you interpolate it against the cost analysis curve, once you start getting down to that hundred-dollar range from the two-forty-two, that's half their impact, but they're getting so much for that hundred. And I think that's a story we can tell. There's a lot of good story here to tell. And I'll go back to what I said when we started this conversation. I think the board needs to be decisive in what they do with the elementary schools and put that in. Shiloh needs to start to work with the redistricting and have that conversation. So people, right now, a lot of people are feeling anxious about it. They don't, because they don't know. So tell them. So now they know. And now they can start to rationalize that in their brain if they're going to support it or not. And they might not. But if you don't tell them, and there's not a clear path, they will not support it because there's just too many unknowns. Just like you said, Jeff, you're just adding too many unknowns. And I think as many checkboxes you can say is a positive, like, we're doing this, we're doing this, and we have to do this because of our financial obligation to the taxpayers, because we have to operate the buildings efficiently. And that is something we heard through the committee meetings and the polling and the town hall we had, is that they want a school district to run efficiently, cost, be efficient with our tax dollars. And I think that those two things go very much in hand-in-hand. So going from four buildings to three is a positive in the community's eyes. It might not be for the teachers or the parents in those buildings that are going to affect it, but the community as a whole sees that as a you being responsible with our tax dollars. That we can do with sixty-two and a half million dollar bond issue for no levy increase is a positive, that because of what you've done has gotten to this point. That's a positive. There's a lot of positives to talk about. To get a brand-new middle school that's modern and has all the things they need to be efficient element or middle school all on one floor for twenty million dollars? That's a great story. Yeah. So I think there's a lot of positives here. And I know that you guys have been through the rear end of all this. There's people who are passionate about this part or that part, and I get that. And this is a tough, tough choice, a tough decision. I get that. I really do. But I think that you just, you need to just start checking off one thing at a time and move on to the next thing, and figure out where you want to go. But I think that if we, if this was a different community who hasn't been through what you've been through, I would say run it all with one question. But that's not the case. You've had two recently in 2023 that same dollar amount fell. I think that would set the wrong, but I think if we say, we're going to give you the option to just tell us specifically, but we're also going to get off square one. We're going to move forward with a new high school, and we will figure out how we do. If you don't like that plan, we will come back to you and ask you why you didn't like that plan, and we will restructure it and see where you want to be. But that, I think it adds more confusion to the community if you say, we're, this is our nicest building, and we don't want to close it as an elementary school. I get that. That's hard. But what it does do is it puts them through another cycle of change that I think you can avoid. And by sending a clear message, this is the plan, that we think this, the community's told us, the online, the funding survey shows that that's the support for that plan.
We have an obligation with this to be reminded, and I'm reminding myself, of our budgetary responsibility and why we're at this point in the deep conversations, too, which has to drive the conversation, which are serious. I mean, when we look at, what, one-point-seven-five, that's what I wrote down, of saving, like, we have to figure out how we're doing that, and that's part of this whole executed plan of why we hired the experts to kind of help drive us of where are we going to be if we don't take action.
Bill, you've been telling us for two years that we need a new high school. That's what I've heard from you over and over again. And now you tell me we need to close the middle school.
We need a new classroom. Those hexes are terrible. That's what this whole started out. We need to replace those. Now it's expanded way beyond. Like, how much do you have in there to waterproof the front porch?
I don't have specific dollars in there for that.
Five million, ten million?
No, no. We're going to build a wall, a baseball wall. I don't know what that costs to be, actually, but it's going to, you know, but it's not just for that. It's more shop space. It's more tech space. It's a lab space that's going to go on top of that. You know, it's career and tech-ready education spaces.
Which we saw a lot of that in our thought exchange. I mean, lots at CTE.
That's why we have three buildings out there that does that. You got an automotive shop, you got a welding shop.
Yep.
An buffet.
That's a sample.
But then, there's a lot of classroom space there. I don't know why you need to replicate that in a new building.
I will say to the, the other thing that I think is happening is that we're not addressing the decision that will help us move forward with the other decisions. That's what I feel like is, you know, we're spending a lot of time here because there's uncertainty around this table about what we're doing, about what we're doing with our elementary schools.
Just want to honor what we asked of the community and what they told us. That's what I'm asking for.
There was a request for a five-minute recess. Is our folks okay with five minutes? Let's take a five-minute break, please. Five minutes recess.
You know, the common space is other size. The media center.
Okay, we're shut.
I think that is where the, yeah.
We will keep those.
I think there was a question, there's a conversation about what's the deadline? When do we have to do things? And so I pulled up the schedule that was sent to me by Piper Jaffray of timeline of deadlines of things that has to be done. This is for compliance. But, you know, and there was also somebody asked me the question about what does the bond language look like for each question? I just did this with the community the other night. It's, it doesn't, it's not very specific, but it will say, do you authorize the Board of Education to encumber bonds in the amount of, X amount of dollars to do these things? And it's very high-level. It's not very specific, but it is not misleading either. So if, for one instance, like, if the lease purchase is part of that, you need to say lease purchase is part of this plan. You know, athletics is part of this plan. You need to say that in there. But you don't have to say how big it is or, you know, all the amenities.
Details, yeah.
And that's what the voters will see. Now, once this happens, we'll start the bond campaign, the informational campaign, and that's what this would, you've been through this, but the board, you know, would be given informational, factual-based information to the community to say, and this is of the plan. And I think we heard in the survey as well, that the community really wants to be not just heard, but reacted to. So we would give that plan back to them, say, this is why we're doing this, because this data we saw, and build that campaign of facts. And then what we would hope that there would be a yes committee formed, hopefully by a group of people who are in favor, that would go out and, you know, organize a yes campaign. But the school district would be doing a fact-based campaign, and they would be doing a yes campaign. So that's how, and that, but this gives you the timeline. So somebody asked, when do we have to do this? And it says no longer, no later than December eleventh. The resolution has to be adopted by the board.
So if we go with the two-question ballot, you'd have to explain that one, too.
Yeah, you would.
And this bond issue.
And I think that that would be an interesting way to craft, how do we craft that? Because Or do you say the total plan is the total plan? Or do you want to, you know, how we message that and be very clear? Because I don't want to confuse anybody, you know, of like, well, I don't understand which question one is, question two, what was the tax dollar? So we want to be real clear how to craft that messaging to the community. Yeah, but we can do it.
It remind me, Dwayne, when we selected your firm, that step you just talked about here from once we approved to putting it together, forming the language campaign, you helped lead in that.
Yeah.
So that's different. The last three we did, we did not have a lot of help from our firm. So you would help us formulate the narrative, the discussion, the fact points. Bring us back to community input, those kinds of things that we could then push that information.
So somebody asked me last time, how would we interact with that? And what we do, we're not here to, as architects, we're not going to campaign, right? But we're going to give you the tools to answer those questions and to go out to the community and say that. And I think I even sent a kind of rough draft of frequently asked questions, how's this different than the last plan? You know, all those things, what's in this plan, you know, all those things. So we'll help you build all that out so it can be on a website, it can be in informational handouts. But then I'll say, we also think that it's really important, and I heard from people in the committee meetings was like, we had an idea, but we didn't know what it was going to be. They just said, trust us, or get you a new high school, trust us. It'll be like, we trust us. Well, we don't, we want to be more specific than that. It's a little dangerous to be very specific because we're doing it in a vacuum without teachers and parents and students input. But what we can do is give representations of what it could look like. And I started that when I showed you some renderings last week, you know, the video with the high school, front of the high school could look like in a plan. And we would call those architectural renderings for concept only before the bond passes and, you know, we would be happy to throw all these away and start over. But it shows, well, okay, that is potentially, they haven't really thought about this, this works. And we think that's really important, where some firms are like, no, just trust us and we'll wait, you know, like, we think it's like, be transparent, tell as much information as you can. But it can come back and get you. Because, well, because if you show something in a bond campaign, and then when we go through the design process, we get input from teachers and the community and teachers and students and those things, and they're like, oh, that doesn't work, or we find out that, you know, we've got a gas main that goes right into that piece of property or something, you know, that we gotta move the building or change something about it. You can say, well, that's all we showed me. You built this now and I don't trust you because you showed me something different. Now I got this. So you got to be real clear about this is architect's concept, not the final plan, but shows the potential of what could be. We think that's important. Be careful about how you say that.
And then as we have configuration challenges with building, that's a responsibility of our district to be like, hey, here's the latest update, here's a change that we're making and here's why we're making it.
Right. This doesn't start, you know, stop when, on March 3rd, when, you know, there's a continual campaign of, you know, information given out to the community so they know what's going on. That's their plan, right? And they want to know that what the plan is and they're getting their dollars worth or being heard still. Any other questions about schedule on that? So I think the other thing that was asked was the question. And this was the question that was in the survey, option three question, right, Sherry?
Yes.
So what did district's most urgent facility needs scaled back renovations of the oldest academic areas, McPherson High School, including portions of the next wing, along with safety and security upgrades at all elementary schools. So to that point, I swapped out the spreadsheet a little bit. So I moved, well, wait a minute, this one, sorry. I moved the safety and security entries down here to the $61.8 million. And I moved athletics up as a separate line item to be considered as the second question. Still the same amounts, it just flip flopped.
That's all I wanted.
And I think that's, I see no reason. And I went back through the committee one and committee two results real quickly. And you're right, athletics was not the top priority from the community, so.
But then again, to Sherry's point, go back and reread that question and really read it. It says, this plan includes scaled back renovations to the oldest academic areas of the high school, including portions of the HECs. We're not keeping the HECs.
No.
We are completely demolishing the HECs and adding an addition, and that was not part of the question that we asked.
Yeah, because at that time with $50 million, we could not do.
But I'm saying, your results are saying that is what the community supported. This plan is not what the community said they would support. That's to Jeff's point.
But if you go up to where we are more closely aligned in option two question, they said that 57% were aligned with that option, which is more aligned with what we're actually doing.
One of the things I'd point out too is the numbers have changed and we'll have to make sure that we do that because you as a board has been able to make note that you can bring down your 1.5 LOB in order to make these adjustments. So I think, I think one of the things that we all want is the data to be like an endorsement of exactly what, you know, this is me telling you today, I'm going to do it. The fact of the matter is, that's not always going to be true, but it's giving us the best insight. To me, I just having seen the whole process, having heard all of the dialogue, you've got a really solid plan.
Well, I don't think.
And it matches feedback, even if it's not direct to one question.
To the question that, you know, Sherry said, option three said that, option two said that. I think you have to take the totality of what the questions were in the survey. They purposely asked questions in a certain manner to elicit different responses. It wasn't, you know, lockstep with, here's option one, do you like it? Two, do you like it? It's a mixed bag of what you have up there.
And it sounds like Perry, to your point, people that answered strongly agree to option one, didn't even get asked question two or three. And so those people are probably like, I thought we said that we like this, you know? And so, and I trust their scientific method, you know, they're experts. That's why we hired them. But just to be fair and clear, the people that answered yes to the bottom one are the ones that got asked all stages of the question. So most people didn't even see option three or hear option three.
Or two.
But it seems like they're more in favor of renovating the HECs first, tearing them down and building new. We didn't put that in the plan in the beginning when we did the community meetings. And so, you know, the way they worded these questions for the survey is a little bit different than what we presented to the community. We showed them a rebuilt high school.
But I think it's interesting that when you add the dollar amount, so option one as a plan, in a bubble of a plan, was 48% loved a brand new high school plan and making the whole high school, the new middle school, 48%. But then you add the dollar amount into it, $485, it dropped big time, 13%. Yeah.
Thirteen.
Thirteen percent.
Thirteen percent.
And that's where I, that's why I keep saying, it's not about, the plan's very important. They want a good plan, but they want something they can afford.
They want something they can afford.
Yeah. And the last two elections, we were at the $240 range and we're at the $109 range now. I think that is a huge, huge difference.
Yeah.
It's a half, more than half.
It's more than half. Yeah.
So I think the 109, is that adding the second part?
Yeah, total, yeah.
So this 89.5, your $200,000 account is $9.10.
Oh, I see, okay.
And last time, I have those somewhere.
Is that what they're paying now?
No, no, they're paying more than that now. I can't remember what their total.
Your mil is 52.305.
So.
52.305. This is 4.75 in order to get, by the way, that's again, I'm from a tax rate comparison. There's a lot of marketability on this. Going back to your comparison data, this still keeps you in the upper 50s.
It's still, it's still in the middle of pack.
Still in the middle stack. You're getting a huge amount of work done.
However, it's getting lost because of the assessed values at the county level, the city, like it.
There's a lot of confusion.
Yes, we have to do a lot of helping, helpful education around what this means outside of the county and the city, you know, those dollar amounts. Because I've heard a lot of negativity or confusion and how this impacts the monthly overall, because that's what people look at, right? Their monthly, how am I going to care for all of this when we get county at this level, the city at this level, and now we're doing this, even though we're trying to work closely to neutral? The other elements are creating some tension.
Let me understand, it's currently what we're paying for our bonds, you said was eight something mils? And I know this new plan is going to be four something?
No, your eight mils would continue, that's a no mill increase, so those, that levy would stay.
Okay.
The only increase, and then once approved, your second question would bump it up 4.75.
I see, okay.
So you, in the second, so, but you're getting comprehensive across both plans, you're getting everything addressed for 4.75 mil increase, which is a $9.10 per month on that. I don't ever want to diminish what any of that means, but I do think it's noteworthy. Again, I want to come back to your work in which you test this group and what's been able to be achieved is previous asks were in the $20 range per month, and this is now brought back down to $9.10. That's a phenomenal opportunity for.
But to do that, we got to agree on what we're going to do.
I think you're in more agreement than what you realize. It sounds like you've got a pretty good idea about two questions and we've transitioned some things around. I think that's my impression, but.
Can you send those results over real quick?
Yeah, I actually had, I appreciate you saying that. I had actually placed on the, on, I want to be clear, as a practice, we don't, I don't ordinarily put same day information on, but also we had a special meeting the day before Thanksgiving break, and then we've had one now immediately following. So I don't, I wouldn't, ordinarily, I would absolutely always share this information with you, I just wouldn't place it on the agenda without having that chance to at least, or is it, you want to stand by it for a minute? So what's been updated from, you know? These are now available to you under the, I've added those to the agenda, close a few of those. These are the, this is the executive summary, so you'll recall he wasn't able to go over the executive summary. Want to be clear, this is literally my first read, so I'll offer it here just for yours. Going over much of the same information, he was able to talk through with you. So he's sharing here some of the final kind of items here. And I've invited him to be a part of the September, sorry, the December 8th meeting to go over this in more detail. He already has that reserved, if that'd be for the board to go back over this with you. The key item was that much of the executive summary is just a more in-depth detailed look at what the initial item was that he provided. But I've included that in this and would include it then also in the upcoming December 8th meeting as well. The, let me verify one thing real quick on his email. So there's three items in there from Tomlinson. He included online information, which I've included on there. He said, the addendum to the executive summary for the telephone service, you'll see the executive summary references the dashboard. Normally these two items are set with the dashboard, but our dashboard design will not have that ready until we do this week or early next, depending on availability. We put a rush on the attached documents because now your timeline is tight and important, so. When I spoke with him briefly before the meeting, I posed the question whether there was anything noteworthy that would be something that I'd need to put on the board's radar. And he stated, no, generally speaking, his, the key summary, as he shared with the scientific, the only difference was that you'd see the more detailed view of it in the executive summary, which is available there and which you'll have time to review between now and the next meeting. The online, not surprisingly, was a little bit different, but generally still consistent with what you were looking at there. So I really, I want to be clear, I'm offering that for you. I don't have yet, aside from a seven minute conversation with him, don't have any more dollars than what I just sent it to you there. So any questions that I know you would have is why that we would normally not put something the same day on the agenda. Happy to provide it to you.
What other question, maybe people are looking at? It's pretty bulky and detailed, which is good.
It's also good stuff.
Can we see how many people responded to that?
Have you had a chance to look at it? Yeah, it's a bird call, I think.
See that?
550 responses to each question.
That was the. Oh, yeah, that N equals 229, N equals 227, is that probably the number, huh?
I just want to be clear, I want to be able to answer your questions, but I got this at 4:17 this afternoon and we had a board meeting that started at 6:00. I'm not trying to not answer your questions and just those types of, I was in a meeting at that time.
Chalo, you're good. We understand, we appreciate it. You handled it right.
I just want, more than anything, I want you to know, I'd be happy to have that. I truly haven't had a chance to look at it.
So currently we have December 8th is the scheduled meeting.
Correct.
We do not have any other special meetings.
So to be clear, you have December 8th is your next special meeting. Currently, we have upon our agenda, December 11th legislative luncheon. That's code 372. Dr. Van, unfortunately, our legislators are not no longer able to attend. So just to recap, the question was, what do, do we have any special meetings? We have December 8th, which is one week from today. December 11th was a legislative luncheon that really, we could repurpose that, it's a scheduled time. Our legislators will not be able to attend, so we were already looking to, quite frankly, we're looking to need to cancel that. But that could be repurposed and utilized for this. We'd have to essentially call for that to be changed for that purpose.
Why would we need an extra meeting?
I was just answering the question that was posed of what do we have? And then December 15th, you have a regular meeting. But as you saw in the timeline earlier, that'd be past your time to do it.
Jeff, why, like, what are you thinking?
I'm not prepared to make any decisions on these questions that came to us late in the afternoon today.
Yeah, my question was, could we have a special meeting yet later this week? After we've had a chance, or you've had a chance to look at these, maybe get some information from him about these, if that's still. Maybe get some information from him about these, if, if that's still questions that people think will help them make a decision.
Here's what I'd offer. You are, here's what I'd offer. In terms of decisions tonight, the only thing I was offering was, so let me name actually what needs to occur at some point soon. At some point, action on the long-range plan needs to occur. At some point soon, action on the, uh, final ballot, which honestly we've made progress tonight, and I think we have a little bit of clarity, although I want to make sure that we understand what we would need to pull together. Clearly, we need a direct action like we talked about on the twenty-fifth. We need direct action from the board to note a transition from four elementaries to three, along with naming the elementary that, that would be. And then I think a really good point that was also raised in the November meeting was the, uh, a motion to officially set one point seven five as the target for savings. We've been working off of that because that's what we've presented, but I think it'd be wise to take action on that. There's no direct action that would absolutely have to occur tonight. You could take action on all of those a week from today in the follow-up meeting. So you could, you could do that, take those actions. You could potentially, the, the primary item that we would want to know left here is, are we in general consensus and agreement around what the two questions would be? Because then we want to start working with Dustin Avey to at least bring, to draft ballot language, because that has to be, that's something that we would want you to take a look at on the eighth. Is that?
Takes a little bit of time for the lawyers.
It takes time for attorneys to, to draft that and make sure that it's there. I think based on what we've heard feedback-wise, we could have that, the, the new adjusted components be question one, and the new adjusted component be question two. And we could bring that back on December eighth. We could maintain that December eleventh meeting for the purposes of, of, uh, follow-up or anything that would potentially not be resolved or need to be resolved between December eighth and December eleventh. You do your final, final action December eleventh.
Oh, it seems that tonight we're consensus that we have to close one elementary school. Don't have to name it. The sooner the better probably, but just to let them know that that, that will have to be regardless of bond issue. That's a separate question really. I mean, financially, we have to close one elementary.
So you're suggesting we just take two actions tonight for sure?
I want to be very clear. I'm not stating that you need to take action tonight, but whatever you don't do tonight, we absolutely need action on December eighth, and it needs to be for the board.
We've had staff continue, I've had staff reach out to me, I've had staff, we've had staff email us. We know we're closing an elementary school. Nobody wants to do that. And so I wonder if us did not get quagmire down in all of these complexities at the same time, if we don't motion for us to work our budget towards one point seven two million tonight and make a decision about a school.
You want to pick the school tonight?
I, I think that's what's, what's causing a lot of this angst is there's uncertainty and there's a lot of pain in all of our hearts around this decision. And our staff want to know, and our families are going to appreciate dealing, I mean, they're not going to like what they hear. There's going to be somebody that loses. We understand that. It is, it is gut-wrenching. However, the sooner people know, they can begin to plan. And it is the, uh, last week you talked about that, Sheri, the ethical thing to do for our people.
Several, several people, I do not know, like, approach me in public and thank me for saying what I said, so.
Yeah, people want a decision, and I'm not sure why we're not making it.
Well, here's, here's why I don't feel making it is because I'm still torn between the pros and cons of closing an elementary school based on the facts of the building and the fact that we need to reduce it down, or going with a long-range plan that we don't even know is going to be the actual long-range plan based on the communities. They're the ones that get to decide whether Eisenhower ultimately becomes in the Bush or not, not us. We get to say that's what we like and that's what we are projecting. But for me, I would rather make the decision on closing it based on the building itself.
Chelsea, there is not enough room classroom-wise for us to have the ten extra classrooms that we need for sped, for the other things, for overflow, if we keep Eisenhower open. There are sixteen classrooms in there. It is simply a logistics issue.
But we have enough space at the other ones. Dwayne has said that numerous times, that there is capacity at the other buildings, and we're redistricting anyways, so we would be able to move that capacity around.
I mean, there's only, so how many classrooms are in our other buildings? Twenty-five?
Twenty-four classrooms in Lincoln, twenty-four classrooms in Roosevelt, twenty classrooms in Washington, and sixteen classrooms at Eisenhower. From a logistics standpoint.
Is that finished or unfinished? Cause there's.
You have two that are unfinished at Eisenhower, and those have been unfinished since they were.
No, sixteen total finished.
Right, then two more that could be, so that's eighteen.
No, no. With those finished out, it'd be sixteen.
There's fourteen finished. Two in there right now that are not.
There's two not finished, there are fourteen classrooms right now.
We need to have those numbers.
Do what?
If you have, have a good, sort of, the numbers in each of those classrooms. Is it in something we receive today?
No, no, it's free news.
But we need to see that and have that written down so that that part is a part of our narrative here.
I want to be clear, I'm, I want to be clear. I am happy to collect as much specific data as I can, but I need specific data to go collect. So I'll bring back classrooms. I'll happily do that. Last week I was tasked with doing pros and cons and work with my team to do it. That could only be done today because they were all on Thanksgiving break. So I did that and brought this back to you. I want to bring you the information, but you've got to help me by giving me the specific questions. I will bring back classroom numbers. What else would there, what else would the board desire I bring back to help you have clarity to make a decision in the board?
Doesn't our long-range plan suggest that we're going to have a new middle school up at Eisenhower?
Yes.
So if we approve the long-range plan, then that kind of settles it, doesn't it?
Yes. I feel like that's where the, kind of the inability to approve the long-range plan is coming from. And we have people that are wanting a decision, and we have people that don't want us to make certain decisions, and I certainly respect that. You start talking about any one of our schools, and you're going to have families that are deeply impacted by that. So it's great obligation that we have as a board to help.
I'm sorry, we're only a few days from today or Monday, so it's, I understand identifying the site, but I also want, do not want this to appear that we made a decision tonight based upon information that we received at the end of the day. I, I don't disagree. We really need to be able to study what's been offered to us, the pros and cons, need to, to know the sizing. That's important to me to be able to articulate that to others. One of the reasons why that wouldn't work for an elementary site and those kind of things. So whether it's a special meeting this week, as Perry suggested, or if it's added on, I can support the fiscal. We, we talked about that last time. I can support the general motion from four to three, that I would prefer to identify the long-range plan and the, the overall bond structure. It either a special meeting this week or on Monday.
Would you make that a motion?
Let's do a special meeting because that way we can get this handled and we can focus Monday on the other issue that we need to really be dialed in on.
So this week, what it works for.
Okay, can I just do a quick timeout just so I can clarify? In last week's report that was on the twenty-fifth, this is where those numbers were presented.
I did not present those. No, I did not present them.
I'm sorry.
They were at, at the end of the cert, the presentation, I, when I sent that out to you, I didn't delete those on there. We never covered this because I felt it was.
Let me show you where those.
We didn't get that presentation.
You did, you did get this presentation, and, and these three slides were at the end of that, because I thought they came up in conversation, I could pull them up, but I, I was not, I did not something I review. And this just shows how the classes would be used as a pre-K five at Roosevelt, Washington, and Lincoln. Uh, and this is of course blind, um, without having, you know, the input of teachers and principals and stuff, but it just shows that in this scenario, you would have at, um, like Roosevelt, for instance, your kindergarten this year, this fiscal year or educational year, yeah, at Roosevelt, you'd have three sections of kindergarten, three sections of third, and three sections of fourth. Never fails to be two sections. Your pre-K would be eight sections. And that shows you're down at the very bottom, your average class size is when you do that. And then at the end, where the flex classrooms, that has thirteen classrooms, that would be used for flex in this configuration. So you have capacity in this configuration.
So what I'll do is work with Dwayne to have that for all four buildings, similar to that.
I've got, yeah.
And provide that to you on a conversation that would occur. Sounds like you were looking, seeking to establish another time.
And let me clarify one thing, I just looked it up just to make sure, but Eisenhower today has fourteen first through fifth grade classrooms. They're finished. Two of those are the severe needs classrooms that are on the corner, so you take those two out for general education, but it does have three kindergarten rooms. So actual classrooms, total build-out classrooms is seventeen at that building with two potential adds.
So it could have up to nineteen.
What's built out. Repurpose those two to have severe needs rooms.
The flex classrooms are being used, utilized that we currently have in every building. I mean, because they have people floating in and out of those flex classrooms for many different needs, and so it's not like we just have rooms that are sitting empty. We do not, I mean, we need those flex classrooms. We currently have enough flex classrooms to provide the special services for the students that we have in the district, so. Mr. Cash, you mentioned that, that configuration that you just showed us didn't have staff's input, so at what point does, cause that's not my, I don't know how.
I think it goes deeper than that actually, because when you start talking about redistricting, you know, that's where, um, Rob's group would be able to come in and say, the line goes here, so these kids would go to that building, so you would need three sections of this building, or you would need two sections of this building based on that configuration, but also how they have staff and, you know, cohorts are built out, you know. Mine was just, you know, it could be, those numbers move up and down, it's the bottom number you got. How many class sections do you have? And keep the grades levels, you know, the class sizes small, like what we heard a lot about.
I, I just wanted to make sure it's done in conjunction, not in isolation of our staff.
So forgive me for being that guy, but are we really having a conversation that says we are either going to vote within the next week to move the middle school to Eisenhower, or we have no plan at all for what's going on with middle school? And also, we don't know which elementary school it is?
That's what it sounds like.
Cause that does not make sense to me. That sounds disingenuous.
Well, and the fact that we were given quite a bit of.
I appreciate we're making sure that we do our due diligence, but like, I don't feel like.
We've been doing due diligence up until this point, and pros and cons, I understand that, um, but I'm with you, Sheri, it's like, uh, it's just very, very frustrating because it feels like things are connected and for some reason we're bogged down. And I get it, we don't want to do certain things. I don't want to do it. I particularly don't like being on the board now. Like, this is not a fun time for any of us.
No.
These are hard decisions.
Rebecca, you said earlier, this is really the first time we've talked about this, some of this stuff. Been getting reports, but we haven't had this conversation with each other about the specifics of it, and I, I think that we should not rush, rush past that.
Then I would love us to.
How did we not have that conversation when we said we want to move the middle school to the, to Eisenhower? And that's been our plan for how long? And now we're talking about, on one hand, we're going to approve a board issue, a bond issue that says we're going to move the middle school to Eisenhower, and on the other hand, we're going to say we didn't have this conversation. Those two statements, they just don't go together.
And I would love us to spend time right now, the hour we have left, going over the pros and cons. That's what I thought we were getting them for, and I, I assume that we would go over them tonight together. That seems like a great use of our time.
I'm happy to offer you the pros and cons of each of your elementaries.
And have a discussion in the room together.
Happy to do that for you, if that's what the will of the board is.
I think we have it. I mean, we, I'm not sure that you have to present that to us, Shiloh, you know? We've got them in front of us. Let's go through it.
Not necessarily do that if we're going to name Eisenhower the new kindergarten middle school.
I hear you, Bill. So then what, so, you know, then why are we having a special meeting?
We meet tonight?
Why would we schedule another one?
We're scheduling one for the eighth, aren't we?
We have one on the.
Final extension time.
Well, we're talking about doing one on potentially Wednesday or Thursday of this week to talk about an elementary school.
I don't need to do that.
I don't either. Do you?
No.
I'm an analyst, so I analyze everything in detail, and this is new information for me, so I think and process a lot of different.
So let's analyze it here, because I'd love to, to do that tonight. It's the will of the board.
Did, Shala, did you share my email? So one of the things I was going to say, and this is something that I've learned in my time here, working with a variety of different folks, is especially under major topics, some of us can process and get to a place quicker. We knew the way that we scheduled the meetings, the twenty-fifth and the first would be difficult because there was a holiday in the middle that everyone needed to rightfully, I hope you spent some good time with family. There has been a lot of information provided. It would create at least a couple of days for Bucit or even the Wednesday or Thursday meeting of this week, which I didn't check my availability, but if that would give people the opportunity to thoughtfully continue to review and be prepared to come back and give some direction, I would completely understand that and I would kind of look to the will of the board on that. It were, these are significant decisions and, um, I guess that'd be my two cents. I'd be more than able to make myself available on the, what did we say, Wednesday or Thursday? I could do that over the noon hour. Could not do it in the evening.
Evening, can we do Wednesday evening? Does that work for people?
That'd be for Bill.
No.
We need you here, Bill.
If I'm the only one needing a special meeting, because I'm going to be gone on the eighth, talk through some of this. Just pass on that and do it on the eighth, or kind of, I hear Chelsea saying something different, don't I?
I just said I need a time to process. I don't care whether it's a special meeting or on the eighth. I just need time to make my own, come to my own conclusion.
And I guess my point earlier with what I said about the motions is because you already have the eighth scheduled, you could step back away from this and thought, really give yourself a week to be prepared to come back and then take the action that it seems someone already.
If you need another meeting, you can do it on the eleventh.
And if you needed an additional meeting, you could do it on the eleventh.
We want to sign the poll.
So not beyond the eighth is the.
Pollinowski P on the twelfth.
What is your agenda for that?
The eighth is a special meeting that we established back in September as a part of this process. So we added the first most recently, but the eighth has already been called as a special meeting, so it would, the structure of the eighth, one week from today, would already look a lot like what we've had on the twenty-fifth and then here tonight.
So that, when was the regular board meeting?
The fifteenth. I'll be honest with you, Jeff, I actually reviewed that today, and I also had a similar reality. Our July organizational meeting, when we called it, we had it for the fifteenth. So our regular meeting is the fifteenth, but our eighth. But our eighth, when you set it back in September, when we set all of our meetings, we set the eighth for a special work session for this.
And I would like to just bring forward that we have a negotiations meeting on the ninth. And so this board will need to spend considerable time having some conversations and executive session on the eighth. So there's a lot to get done on the eighth.
About this hearing.
So what's the will of the board?
It could be night, ten thirty present.
What does Thursday night of this week look like, friends?
I can make myself available.
I won't be here.
Thursday night or Wednesday? What about tomorrow night?
We have to have enough time.
I'm not comfortable having a special meeting on this particular topic of our budget and an elementary school without Bill. And I don't like, and you're not going to be here on next Monday, Perry? And you have six members.
You're going to be here on the eleventh?
No, I'm gone all week, seventh through the twelfth.
Will we be open to taking a break and absorbing some information? I love what you said, Shiloh, that there are people that want, information comes in, they want to sit with it. But we've got a lot of factors going on at the same time.
What do you mean by break? Like tonight to sit? I'm not going to speak for everyone, but I wouldn't want to rush it when I'm hearing some saying, I need a little bit more time to process. I want to be respectful of.
Yeah, and I don't want to sit here and just, yeah, and have everybody in the audience just sit where we look like. I'd rather be able to take that time and really think about it.
So next Monday night, we would need to get done the finalization of a plan or a bond.
Long range.
Be closing an elementary school. We could probably make a motion to work on our budget tonight, the 1.72 million. So that's done.
Yeah, well, I mean, you're absolutely, that's.
We know that's what needs to happen.
Something that you know you can take action on and would be more than capable of doing. That's well, that's appropriate, whether you do that now and then that, that's certainly something you could take. In my opinion, you could take that action tonight, but if others want to do those all at the same time, we can do that.
And then we also need to work on negotiations so we can get a contract hopefully happening for our teachers.
On the eighth.
On the eighth.
Remember, there wouldn't be any action because you won't meet until the ninth.
With our, correct, I understand.
Just naming.
Yes, but there is new information that needs to come back.
Appreciate that.
Yes.
So hearing, it doesn't sound like we're going to add another meeting. We have the eighth already.
Well, I'm fine is, it mentioned earlier to approve our budget tonight. So I'm willing to offer that if you're ready as a motion that we establish, maybe we establish the district savings target of 1.75 million. Staff and operational adjustments needed during the spring transition of 26, 27 school year. So we would have that.
Second.
A discussion.
That was motion four, is that what you're talking about?
That's not, motion four or.
Open it up for a discussion.
Do you know what it is? Right there in front of us.
Not hearing any discussion. All in favor, say yes.
Yeah.
Any opposed with no? So that passes the motion to save the target of 1.7 million to guide the staff and operational adjustments needed during the spring transition for our 26, 27 school year by a seven zero. Any other action the board would like to take tonight?
Sure, I mentioned that Eisenhower be the elementary school that we identify as the school that needs closed. We can wait or not, but I put it out there. Y'all can shut it down, that's fine.
Well, I think we should vote on it, I'll second it.
Excellent. Discussion?
I mean, what are we going to gain by waiting all week?
It gives me time to keep going and thinking and processing all of this. It is a very big decision. We have a lot of families, we have a lot of lives that are going to be in jeopardy. I understand that, but closing that school is a huge impact for students and for families as well. And moving them from the north end to the central end of town is bussing. We're going to have to figure out bussing because now we're adding that onto families. We need to think about making sure that they can get their kids there and acclimate weathers. We just had snow today. What are you going to do with all those kids from Eisenhower that now have to walk to Lincoln or to Washington? Because that is where they've been districted.
They shouldn't be bussed.
It's an added expense that the district is going to have to pay for by closing the north end school. And that is what I've got to wrap my head around, that I just don't think Eisenhower.
Be any different over front of the other schools?
Lincoln, we have two.
I was thinking to say, what if the bond doesn't pass? What if it does? What if it does? Wouldn't you rather that planning started now?
That is my discussion for closing any elementary school. I would hope that this board can make a commitment that we will wrap our head around transportation in a new way for any elementary school because we've got kids that'll be walking further distances. Shiloh, do we currently have a bus that comes in on the north end of town, the south end of town, the west end of town and the east end of town?
Correct.
Do we currently stop and pick up kids?
Yes.
On all four corners, all four places, Bill?
There would have to definitely be a hard look towards logistics to make sure that we encompassed everything. I would lean towards the idea that we may, it may necessitate an additional route. However, at this point, we could strategize to encompass it within our current routes. Oh, we didn't, to be fair, we don't have a dry report. We're barely covering that now. However, I believe there's a strategizing session that could take place to hopefully encompass that with what we currently do.
Bill, do we have a bus that comes in from the north on Main Street in the morning?
So think of it, think of it as four quadrants of the campus.
Yes.
And we cover each quadrant, we could organize it that way, yes.
Yes, currently we do that. And we have a bus that stops out at Mustang Trail Park right now and picks up kids.
Deerfield.
Deerfield.
In that area.
Mustang.
We're, we're, we also have an in-town route that picks up at several locations around the city. So there are pickup sites and drop off sites. And so would it encompass a lot more strategizing? Yes. Is it possible? Yes, there might be an expense associated with it, but I couldn't put my finger on that without shooting from the hip tonight and giving you a potential. But I, I think there's definitely something to be considered when we talk about transportation.
So something on that, that's an added expense to the district. We're already trying to cut 1.75 million out of our budget.
It's not an added expense that we're not, I'm not willing for us to find a way to take care of our families. And what I'm hearing Bill say is that we've already got four quadrants, four buses coming in and an in-town route that's already happening. So while we need to strategize and potentially have a new driver, it's not an astronomically added expense.
But what Bill didn't say was, is can that bus that's already en route accommodate all those kids that have to move?
There's not that many country kids. I know our buses.
We're not talking country kids, I'm talking the kids that live in Park Ridge that now have to be bused to a different school because they can't walk across the street.
But our buses don't have that many kids on them, correct, Shiloh?
I want to be clear on a couple of things. That's correct, that our out of town routes have, used to run five or six out in the country and now it's down to.
At one point we ran seven routes.
Seven routes in the country. Now we're running three.
Three.
My name is the reality of any one of these decisions or whatever would come forward is that there will be a ton of logistics associated with any one or all of these. And so these are the right things that are why, when there's a transition to be made, then that's why it's good for us to know now so that we can start to hear these questions and start to make plans and solutions. I'll leave it at that.
Well, there's other components with transportation. You know, what's the plan to replace? At what point do we have to replace a bus or tires or whatever? Those would all need to be mapped out and will be because that's part of, you know, facilities, your responsibility.
And we would need to, you know, when we move a middle school to the far end of town, right? I mean, we're going to have to wrap our heads around transportation in a new ways district. That's just the reality if that's where we want, where the community says they want their middle school. Which is what I believe has got us here is the community has said they want this middle school out here. That's the best what we've heard so far, right, Jeff? You know, so, but we do have to think about getting our kids from that end of town over to here. And we are currently figuring out how to, you know, kids to get from the very west end of town to the middle school now. So it's not, we can't figure those things out, but I do want the community to hear that those are important to me as a board member.
Well, it doesn't take humans to do all of that. Takes, there's some soft, there's several different kinds of software that will do setting borders, setting routes. You might have to tweak it as a human, but you.
And potentially another driver, right, Perry? When we're already struggling, I mean.
Yeah, it could put in all the potentials.
Well, we're talking about reducing staff because we're reducing buildings and we need to absorb that back to the budget. Now you're adding bus drivers.
But Chelsea, at some point you have to spend some money to save some money.
Where is there a school that we would not need to have that conversation?
Where we wouldn't need to have that conversation?
Do the kids closest to Washington, they don't, they don't count? Or the kids near Roosevelt or the kids near Lincoln? It doesn't matter who we're talking about.
It's all the way out to Eisenhower. It's no different.
I'm just thinking we have two central schools. That's just where my thought goes is keeping one north, one south, one central. It doesn't, we're going to redefine our district boundaries anyways.
Chelsea, if we didn't have to have a middle school now, I would a thousand percent agree with you. The one in the central part of town makes sense. Like I'm 10 million times over with you, but we need a middle school. Our middle school is falling apart. It will be the next big thing that this board is tasked with for our community. And the cool thing about it is that everybody's kids will eventually get to go to Eisenhower if it's a middle school. And the people that live out there won't have to take their middle school kids into the middle of town. They'll get to walk to school in their middle school. So at some point, you know, we have to think about it in a much bigger picture. So I just wanted to make sure transportation, sorry, Sherry.
And you're getting it for 20 million.
And you're getting it for 20 million. Like I'm with you, but you know, our people are thinking about how to stretch every dollar right now. And people also believe in our school system and want our kids to have the best buildings possible. But they cannot afford some of the things that we would dream about doing. I know I've talked to community members that want us to buy 80 acres of land on the outside of town and put up a brand new middle school, high school. That's awesome. I don't think the rest of the community will be able to afford that. I think everybody says yes until you say, this is how much it's going to cost you a month and a year. And they're like, oh, yeah, I think the one we have is fine. And we know that fiscally it is not fine. We know that structurally it's not fine. So I don't want to close Eisenhower, but I want to do what's best for our community long term. And when you look at the thought bubble today, it's to say, give us something for 30 years. This plan and using that site puts us 30 years out for secondary or longer, where we are in a good spot.
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
The community is going to tell us that in March.
They will.
Do the other three elementaries have the physical space to make them a middle school?
No.
They do.
Not parking wise?
Or square, no, no.
That's what I thought.
There's no way to do that. It would be awesome to do it in the middle of town, like on another middle of town.
Although I'm thinking like at the high school site, it's good because you've got the kids that go to the middle school that take high school classes. They just walk.
I hear you.
Parents are dropping kids off at one site instead of two. They're not going to the center of town all the way to the north end of town. So that's why putting those two on the same campus makes the most sense. Money wise, I get that.
It doesn't, and fiscally, and there's some community members that are not emotionally philosophically okay with that. And there's a lot of people that live in that area that if you start talking about putting a middle school there, they've got some problems with that too. They're already, you know, some are already unhappy about a football field there and the games. And so, you know, I don't think that that's, that plan will fly. I wish it would. I think parents would love it. Like your high school kids just drive all the kids there.
Parents would love it.
But I don't think it will fly, Chelsea, I don't. I wish, I thought it did, but I don't.
I just hate the fact of picking an elementary and closing it, not knowing what the bond results are going to be. But I get 100% where you're coming from is we can't have the community tell us, yes, I want Eisenhower to close and the middle school goes there. So then we make that decision in March. I get that, it's not fair to our community, it's not fair to our teachers and our staff and our families. But at the same time, I just struggle with closing that building with the unknown of if they come back and say, no, we don't want that and it's clear, then we made a bad choice.
And I think that building, configuration wise, for us to go down to three, which we know we have to do, we just talked about our budget, we have to go to three. I don't, I think we would be packing students in, in a way, in a three configuration. And I do think that that building, I would like, that's what I would love to see come back, Shiloh, is if we task you tonight, if we pass, you know, which school, you come back and say, if the bond doesn't pass in March, here's the ways we're going to utilize our facility that is strategic for our community and for our programs. Which I know that you've probably thought about that stuff, you just don't have a way to present that to us. So I think that's important.
And the other thing we talked about too was pulling the preschools out of the elementary buildings. You could repurpose them into Lincoln and compartmentalize that into three sections. So the central office, your head start, your birth program, all that could go in there, which frees up your classrooms.
Chelsea, I hear you, but we still need a middle school.
Well, I know, I'm just.
You know, I mean, I love.
These are the things that I have to think about and process.
I wish you would have had the birth to five conversation in, you know, June, July. Because I think there's, if the community would have had time to absorb that, we would have been able to present that. I think that that could have been brilliant and who knows?
So then are we rushing this bond and pushing it out for the community too fast?
We have been on a plane, on a process. Things have come up and we brainstormed some creative solutions, but I don't believe we're rushing this. I don't.
Sherry, would you mind saying, or I can have Mr. Rhodes read it? So, Mr. Rhodes, could you read for us?
Well, I had to close, select Eisenhower's school to close for 25, 26 school year. 26, 27. I'm sorry, 26, 27.
Not yet.
26, 27, yeah.
Can I make a request on that?
Repurpose.
Thank you.
So motion, you're amending your motion.
To repurpose, not close.
Bill, you were the second, are you okay with that?
Sure. Yeah, our last meeting, we talked about the money. We talked also that there will be a need in order to accomplish that, reconfigure an elementary. You were not ready to name a site. This is the first time, now it aligns with the plan. This is the first time we've identified the site tonight. Okay, I will probably get there, but I can't support it tonight because this is the first time I've seen the site. I support the four to three reconfiguration, but not the identification of the building tonight.
Is that a friendly?
Well, so if we act on the motion, I will be voting no.
Well, that's a way to deal with it.
Right.
Majority agree with you.
We have a second.
You know, I think on the whole issue there, part of the problem is the cart got ahead of the horse. And people started assuming and rumors were made, you know, some time ago that Eisenhower is going to be closed. Not even, you know, and be made into the middle school. I think that's what a lot of the assumptions I heard from people were. Is that if.
How's it?
Perry, we have the drawings of that.
The bond.
The drawing, like so, so we haven't, I mean, we, we, it was very quiet until just here recently. So the community knew.
No.
I don't think they did because the plans that we showed in the, we presented so many options to the community. Do they even know what we're really presenting them? I mean, to be honest.
When we, when we talked about Washington and going down to a two site, the community, we got many emails that said, that is not the picture you showed us. You showed us Eisenhower as our middle school. Right? Yeah, and so, so I don't think it was rumors. I think that was a possibility that we put out there, right?
If the motion had ever been made.
No.
That that was.
I would agree, I wish you would have been doing this, you know, last month or two months ago for our people. But I don't think that it's, you know, rushing that hard has been a bad, you know, like not rushing it has been bad. But I think stalling is causing a lot of angst in our community.
Is there a way in this to have a better picture of what the redistricting looks like? I mean, that takes.
That's going to be a process that will take a significant part in the next several months. I mean, but that's, that's going to be true. I mean, but that's, that's gonna be true. I mean, that's-
Whatever iteration we have. That impacts daycare, transportation to and from schools.
You're redistricting to the point that Jeff has made is that's, that's a process and that has an entire different scope.
Right.
But so to tell you, like, so all I can tell you is that. I would only share that the action could be, which was initially what I had shown here, which was for acceptance this evening, so that the motion could be for acceptance with a final approval occurring on the 8th. I would just showcase that for you as decision makers that that, to Jeff, to Jeff's point, that that would continue to allow opportunity to reflect on it for the next week. And it would be in alignment with kind of what our past practices have been. So that's, I guess, another option.
Is everybody following? Acceptance doesn't mean approved, right?
You're accepting the concept this week, you'd be, it'd be brought back for you for dialogue and approval next week, or on December 8th.
I'm okay if someone wants to make that motion, but my motion stands as it is.
Ready for? So, Mr. Rhodes, can you read that motion one more time?
Yeah. So designate Eisenhower Elementary School as a school to repurpose for the 26, 27 school year.
All in favor with yes?
Yes.
So that was three. And those with a no?
No.
A no? Four, three. I make a motion to, um, how do you say that?
To accept.
To accept what?
And it's a regular interest.
Going from four to three elementaries with Eisenhower being repurposed for potentially the middle school or for other uses for our district. Give me a second.
Why did you add all that? Just say we're gonna go from four to three.
We need a school identified, Bill.
Not tonight. We want another week to think about it. I heard several people say.
So-
Second.
Discussion. That we were-
Well, I'm just saying, all along we've been talking about going from four to three elementaries. Taking this action solidifies that. That's what's gonna happen. We're not identifying the school yet. We'll do that next week.
But we're tent, we're tentatively identifying.
That's in the long range plan. We said we were gonna prove that, so.
Put the motion on the table, but this is open for discussion and that-
I mean, I see you making the decision tonight, and I think some people will wait till next week.
No, I, and I appreciate that. Let's get an acceptance there. And if this acceptance, do you second?
Yep.
Cool.
Sure did.
That one doesn't, then we'll roll with a different type. And we don't have to take a motion.
If you find something else happening between now and then that changes that whole circumstance, then you don't approve it.
Acceptance doesn't really do anything except say that we talked about it tonight. That's all we're doing. No actual movement.
So we can change our minds next week?
Sure can.
My call for question.
Mr. Rhodes, can you read that motion?
Set a move from four to three elementary schools of Eisenhower to be repurposed for the 26, 27 school year. Capture it.
All in favor, sign your yes?
Yes.
I didn't hear. Of three?
I heard four.
Four? It was the fourth.
I said yes. Do you want to say no? Like, that'll help.
That was three. Okay. And that those with a no?
No.
No? Make a new motion, Bill.
Like, nobody's gonna-
We don't have to, folks. I would, I, I'm gonna make a recommendation that we table um, this part of the discussion tonight. Due to where we're, where we're at.
Nobody's willing to do it, so it's not gonna work.
I think there's still a fair amount of questions that we're hearing, um, individuals wanna reflect on and gather some additional information. This does not mean not good work. There's been a lot of good discussion and I think great opportunity for us to hear and listen on both sides of all the information. This is tough for us, for our community. Um, and I appreciate us not rushing, um, and, and listening in closely and asking the questions and receiving that information. So, um, that's my recommendation for this. Perry, will you call in on Monday night of next week?
Okay.
So are you moving that we table this? Okay, I'll second.
All in favor, say yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No. I didn't want it tabled, but it's a moment.
That's okay. That's why we got through the process, we do. Six one. Appreciate, um, this work. Um, anything else?
I wouldn't, I'm sure it's not to be discouraged. We made a lot of progress.
That's what-
We have to hear our opinions.
Is there anything in the long range plan that you want me to modify before approval, for the discussion of approval? We heard some conversation about-
Yeah, you know. Roofs. We need to make sure roofs are in there. Like, I need that in there.
I just don't think we have the dollars allocated just yet. That's why I was asking. Is there something that either in the long range plan, wanted to be more specific, or in the budget that is proposed, be more specific?
No, the only, well-
What if we cut?
For me, one of the things I keep hearing from folks is this maintenance plan. And I wonder how much that's not for you necessarily, but how we can get some of the scope and sequence of how that's gonna play out, um, for us to understand that. I, I, I know we have lots of that work that happens, but I think seeing at least in the long term, how that will look going forward will help people.
Well, I think our other surveyor said that in his conclusions, you need to establish a 10-year plan.
Just, I'm only thinking, this is where you're sitting limbo, because I heard that comment. If there's something you're desiring for me to bring back to you, that'd be a tremendous amount of work in the next week. We have also spent time with the facility committee over the last little bit, identifying those, and this is a comprehensive plan. So is there something you're specifically looking for, or is that more of an item for longer term?
Just know that we have that, you know, specifically. We don't necessarily hear that, um, as at the board table, the, the, the need base.
Do my own, I mean, what would be helpful to me is we come back with question one. Okay, if there's a concise way, instead of going back and finding slides and summaries that, okay, that question one, the survey had this kind of support, and it addressed the committee's primary goals of high school, security, safety, I mean, those kinds. So we have a concise tie-in that I'm sure we would do in a bond question or in a, a bond program, but question two, the same way. How, how does that address? What does that highly, or does that represent the community's recommendation? And does it follow up with the, the survey information? If we can have that in some kind of concise, so I don't have to go look for slides and go through and find, okay, I think that's what happened over there. I think that's what was said here. And we jumped around and looked at some of that tonight, but just to have that summary of how that tied in.
Yep.
And then, um, that, that would be very helpful to me.
Okay.
So Jeff, you're talking about like the community meetings, and then when we had the stuff at the museum, and then our survey, right?
Well, Sheri hit on it here earlier. She looked up and found that the key things from their committee group was, um, dealing with a new high school or renovated high school.
Safety.
And security and safety in our elementary schools. So concisely state that as a part of community work and community survey. So I have that clearly understood that that meets that goal. Question two, was this, you know, a high recommendation of the community for the elementary to move to the Eisenhower site? And did the survey response follow that too?
For the middle school? So you're talking about ballot question one and ballot question two. Thanks, Jeff. Okay.
So, so that I can tie back to all the work we've been doing.
Yep.
But not confuse it with the financial part or the, the part that we just have been wrestling with here. We know financially what we need to do, but we also want, I want it clearly on the facilities questions, that we are responding to community group and survey.
Yep.
That this would identify that. And then, um, some of the other factors that we're saying, the affordability or the repair or the maintenance things, will, will that aggress some of those within that? That would be helpful for me to see that in a, in a summary.
So if, just so I'm clear, um, question one is a new high school with elementary safety and security.
If you were adjusting tonight, does, does that-
And, and the, um, you know, the, the one part of that that's not gonna tie back to any committee meeting or survey is the, uh, paying off the, but that does tie to where they talked about being fiscally responsible.
And maintenance.
Right. So you just make those connections. In this committee meeting, they really talked
about this as being a priority. And the survey said that was a priority.
To address school discussion.
That's pretty easy to do.
I have a really quick question. And again, this is how I process. I'm sorry. We talked about we wanna put in safe and secure entrances into our schools, but that is gonna, we're gonna have to reconfigure some of the layout inside of the school. So how do we do that and disrupt other parts of the school if we're not gonna go back and fix the schools? We're only putting that in. So we're moving classrooms, changing it. We're repurposing space. Is that going to affect the classrooms? Because we're not reconfiguring the whole school like we planned if we don't put all of the elementaries into question one?
Yeah, I think that I thought about that. So in the, in, with that, Lincoln, Roosevelt, and Washington, Washington has a secure entrance, is ready to go. So we're really talking about Lincoln and Roosevelt. If Eisenhower becomes a middle school. Uh, I, I've identified two classrooms that would be made into administration in that secure entrance, and that's that dollar amount that was shown to do that.
So now we've lost two classrooms that could be utilized, and we're not gonna go back and replace those two classrooms because we're not doing anything to the elementary building, both safety-
That's still figured into the capacity analysis. Yeah. So I think I've, I've figured that out, into that capacity analysis, so I can make that connection for you and show you how that would work. Yeah.
Is that reflected in the potential classroom sizes that was in that slideshow?
Classroom sizes or numbers, you mean?
Numbers.
Numbers, yeah, I believe it is.
That's based on the number of sections. So those are factored in regardless of-
And you're not class sizes per head count, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I wanna be clear about that. So I will make sure I come back with that detail to make sure. And if I have it earlier, I'll say, to somebody's point last time, try to get this information to you before the board.
That's helpful.
Yep.
And will you be tasked or will you be tasked with that comparison of the four elementaries? So just so we see currently classroom and what was part of that slide that did not reflect Eisenhower that we looked at.
I will add that with Dwayne to make sure that those two pieces of information- Yep.
I'd like to give you another challenge.
Hi, Eisenhower.
If you make 19 million available to make the Eisenhower 6A middle school, what does that leave for everybody else? To me, that is the key in our whole scenario of being fiscally responsible and utilizing our abilities to the utmost. And like you said, you're gonna get a new middle school for 19 million bucks. If that means the high school and the secure safety stuff has to be second and put on the second question on the ballot, I see that all related. We cannot live with three or four, five years more of losing that economic saving from the middle school. That's my number one thing.
So I just wanna name one thing. We've been coalescing around the two options. We're about to close, and then this gets thrown out there. Is that the will of the board for Dwayne and us to explore that?
I, I love that, Bill, but we need a high school. That's the most pressing thing that our community has been dealing with for the last six years. Um, and then we need a middle school.
I go back to his first exit, 42 million for the high school.
For that long-
You had an idea of that? That's 64 million.
That long range plan is where we have these guardrails and increments, I think, planned out. Um, it would be great if we had all of the financial resources and capacity to do everything right now.
If we're tying back to-
What the community-
The key things of the community. In that work, they did not identify, or they pushed back and said, no brand new middle school, only renovated or reconfigured building. But high school was still priority one. So I don't think we should be asking you to redesign and take 20 million off the high school and try to add it into a middle school. We, we've gotta commit to that high school. We've known for years, that's our most problematic. I agree, Bill. I don't wanna run the middle school, but if we have to go, there are a few more years, and if it wasn't successful on the second question, then let's come back after a successful first question and a nice high school and ask again.
Yeah, with a good maintenance schedule. Yeah, and roofs.
That's about it. Like it or not, the face of the community to most people is the high school, because that's where they go for activity.
It is.
Like it or not, you don't have to like it, but I think it's true, particularly for the older generation without kids.
And ballgames, yeah. Yeah. Uh, Chelsea, did you have something for Dwayne?
I was just gonna task you with doing the pros and cons and coming up with your recommendation, not including the long range plan. Take that out of the picture. I want your recommendation on a building to close.
I believe that's in the, the pros and cons I sent today. Those pros and cons we worked with in collaboration with Dwayne right there. If you're, if you don't, I think the way I said it was if you do not look at the long range of the school. Feedback directly that I haven't, didn't print off. But those pros and cons right there. Just to be clear, from the pros and cons, if you're fundamentally looking at closing the building exclusively for the purposes of which building it was, it'd be different based on if doing so in isolation. But that's what the discussion has been, is that it's not in isolation. It's in a long-term plan that's been all together from the beginning.
So in the pros and cons-
This was in collaboration with the-
Worry about the middle school. This would be the- So we have multiple long-range plans and financial sensitivity.
Yeah, so care over the weekend now in our next meeting to hear, they don't get seats. That's why I wanted it said out loud, just because the community doesn't get seats.
Can the community see it? I mean, I don't know why they couldn't. Uh, Shiloh, I have a wonder, and I wonder if it's the will of the board, because we're kinda all over the place, but I do wonder if there's a very high level, uh, Plan B that might be presented to this board for Eisenhower in the event that question two does not, um, pass at the ballot, so that we know, so that we can swelt the idea that, well, what are we gonna do now? No, we already, we have a plan. I think that that would be helpful if you could work on that. And I'm not saying you have that done by Monday, and I think it can be very high level.
I can work on that.
Okay, thank you. Does, does everybody else agree that that would be helpful?
Sure. Storm shelters? Any consensus on storm shelters at the elementary schools?
We want them. We don't wanna pay for them.
Yeah.
I mean, we want them. We want our kids to have a place to go. Um, but I don't, I don't, if you come back to the plan in the 89.5, where we're staying close to what we have, Dwayne, and our roofs are gonna take care of it.
That's where the money would go. I mean, we're working for maintenance, that's where that money would go.
Our community is hopeful that we will care well for what we, they are investing in.
Okay. That's the direction I'm in. I think as you attach the community feedback, that'll show up.
Dwayne, thank you for being on this journey with us.
Nope.
Um, you're a pretty level-headed guy, and that's helpful.
We're the most unique situation under everyone else. Uh, you're a politician.
No, it's true. It's a true story.
As we wrap up, as we seemingly can go for a fair amount of time, so a reminder that we have the handout, have conversations, as you already are doing. We're back here on the 8th. Get the information, questions that you're thinking of as you continue to review and populate, so that we can have some planned discussion and votes for approval on the 8th.
And these could really help us. So Lara, I just wanted to kind of point out, I think, because we have so many things happening at once, we're working with a deficit, we're working with a building closure, and we're working with the bond. Lots of folks are in there kind of addressing two things that, that the thought exchange is really to help us get clarity about inside the 8.9, 89.5 million, is my understanding. So just to kind of reiterate that for the thought exchange, really what's important to you with the bond, right? The other things, it's not that we don't appreciate people's thoughts in there, but that's not really what we're needing that thought exchange for, is the board. I haven't had it, let's take a look at.
And the one on the 8th that's noon?
No, that's a regular six o'clock meeting.
So just sharing with people, like, hey, what's important to you about the bond is that's what we're, that's what we're looking for.
And so this has a time limit here Friday on the 7th, as you're communicating with folks this Sunday. So this is time-sensitive. That doesn't mean we won't use the communication tool with other work that we have, but this is time-sensitive. So with that, I'm on completing the journey.